...in the township clerk's office and posting it on municipal bulletin board. And the mayor hereby directs that the statement be included in the minutes.
Excellent. Again, thank you and welcome, everyone. I'd like to start off by thanking Dr. Powers for videoing our meeting, although it looks like, I think we're set up to be videoing ourselves now. So again, thank you for voicing those concerns and pressing us to step it up. We're going to begin the meeting with good and welfare. This is where any resident can speak on any topic. Please raise your hand to be recognized and you will have five minutes. Mr. Rose?
Thank you and good evening. Howard Rose, resident. I wish there were more this evening than just a bare quorum. It's an important meeting because it's where the manager explains himself and the council gets to understand what his perception is financially and activities of what the council says it wants. What the council says it wants, though, is important to all of the residents. And I want to impress upon you the fact that we're still in the throes of a recession for many, many people. Stock market's back up, it's gained even beyond what it was way back when for that recession years ago. And things look good, they sound good, but there's still a lot of people who are unemployed. New Jersey has one of the highest rates. I'm concerned regarding what our overall tax rate is. I'm not going to talk specifics and point this and point that, but I can tell you in general terms, I get social security. And I said this last year, my annual social security is approximately the same as my annual TNEC property tax. It's not a problem for me, I'm very fortunate. But there are other people who have less resources and they're not deciding which conglomeration of cable television they want to get. They're concerned with which meal they're going to miss that week because it's a little difficult for them. Last year, we had budget increases and that's when I do look at figures and money and do not much analysis, but a little bit of analysis. And when I hear a council member quote that we had only a three and change percent increase for the township as opposed to the fact that we had a little bit under a 2% increase for the Board of Ed and a bit over a 5% increase for the municipal portion of the government expenses. Well, you had average down to a little over 3% of an increase for our residents, which is high anyway, but the proportion and responsibility of the greatest amount of that money resided here. Now, I don't have answers as to how to cut taxes, reduce costs, other than the common things that you must be discussing, I hope, in great detail. Can we reduce this or that service? Can we change that service so it does a double function? Can we add these people there and take them from somewhere else? Because we're really seeing that this is getting done and that isn't. They're not easy concepts, but they have to be faced. When I look at the budget increase and see the percentage increase, I know that there's a cap. What happened with this 2% cap? You're given flexibility for certain contingencies to go beyond a cap. And in fact, you do. That doesn't make it good, that doesn't make it right, and it doesn't necessarily have to be done because it is necessary, it just has been done. One of the things about a cap that you're not looking at is it's a maximum, even though you can oppose a higher amount. It also means that you can go less than the cap with an increase. What's happened to zero-based budgeting? This is where we're at, this is where we'll continue. Now we know we have to add in health benefits, this, that, and the other, and a couple of other things. But to keep it as grounded as we can, as functional as we can provide, and as varied as people desire to a degree. You can't give everyone seven-day-a-week, 24-hours-a-day library services, so you cut it down to seven days, X amount of hours. Well, maybe it needs only Y amount of hours. We give priority to safety and security and fire, and those are our two areas where we emphasize it, it's the bulk of our budget. I question on that, though, a little bit. See, I'd like to get a better understanding. If we're getting more dispatchers in, that means we're getting people who are doing dispatch, who are in fire or police, I forget which, who will then be allowed to go back into the workaday force of either fire or police protection, which means you're actually getting, in my feeling, brand-new additional personnel into an area. Yet we're also asking for two additional police beyond that. With the people we retrieve from dispatching and paying eight other people, I think it is, to do dispatching, who are civilians, does that allow us some flexibility of switching some lines between fire and police in terms of actual, in the real work world, so that we can not just be paying eight additional people and hire two more police officers, but the fact that we're switching people back into more active pertinent roles for their title and salary be flexed and better utilized? Other questions? I'm sure I'm close to five. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
I went through the budget presentation that the manager presented last Thursday and just wanted to share some insights. I basically had no choice other than to take the numbers that were provided in that budget at face value. The bottom line, as far as I and other taxpayers are concerned, is a number that's provided of a 3.11% increase, an increase of $130 on the average family. I basically took a number of slides directly from the manager's January 9th presentation. Slide number five in that presentation indicates an appropriations increase of 3.11%, about $2.15 million, or a per-year $130 increase on the average family paying the average, owning the average assessed home at $455,000. The appropriations increase is $2.1 million, but the 3.1% increase in appropriations has no connection to what the average taxpayer will pay. The tax increase is actually 5.75%, not 3.1%. The $130 increase shown is not what those numbers will be for the annual tax increase on the average home. That average increase will be $236, 80% higher. $236 is real money. It's more than a year's worth of garbage disposal. It's more than a year's worth of a lot of other things that people, real homeowners in TNEC, have to pay for. And what I want to go through is what left out and what the impact is on the average taxpayer. Slide 13 shows what the numbers were from 2013. In 2013, the numbers for the total tax levy was $51.5 million for the municipal portion of levy, another $1.8 million for the library totaling $53.4 million out of the total tax appropriations. Slide 32 shows the corresponding numbers for 2014, and the horseshoe on the bottom, the $55,555,000, I was a little disappointed that we couldn't complete the $555.55, represents the estimated tax levy for 2014 for both the municipal and library portions of the tax rate. Now, based on those two numbers, the increase in the tax levy will be $2.151 million. But doing the math, dividing by the 2.151 million, by the $53 million in the tax levy last year, is a tax levy increase of 4%. The tax levy increase is going up 4.03%, it's not going up 3.11%. Why is that number not shown? Why is that number 3.11% on that slide? But it's worse than that. The actual increase is closer to 5.75%, 5.8%. And the biggest factor that's missing is revaluation. Revaluation is resulting in losses in the ratables, which means that that $55 million tax levy now needs to be spread across a smaller and smaller tax base. In addition to paying that back, there's less ratables, in essence, to pay that back. And when we look at that next number, basically taking the numbers from the manager's budget, from the budget package available in the library, the ratables will go down from about $5.9 billion to $5.8 billion, a decrease of $100 million. $100 million means not only paying back $2.5 billion to the taxpayers to cover those losses, but it means that those increases in expenses, the $2.1 billion, $2.1 million increase, has to be spread over a much smaller base. The tax rate is the tax levy divided by ratables. The 2013 combined rate of 90.2 cents for $100 in assessed value was based on the $53.4 million in the tax levy divided by 5.9 billion. For 2014, the tax levy has gone up to $55.5 million, ratables have gone down. The tax rate won't be 90.2 cents, it'll be 95.4 cents. The increase in the tax rate will be 5.75%, not 3.11%. The increase on the average homeowner owning a $455,000 home won't be $130, it'll be $236. These are all substantial increases, these are all substantial changes. And we need to sit down and we need to make those changes that need to be made in order to cut this budget. Over the past four years, the tax increase has been 14.6%, and we need to start making those necessary changes.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Any others? Dr. Powers?
Mr. Stone's analysis, I've actually gone over it, he is exactly correct. This is actually a very substantial budget increase. And of course, as you know, you've also done an enormous amount of capital expenditure and commitment of 20, 20 years out in the course of the last year. And I want to point out to you that while you received this document called the Six-Year Capital Plan last year, you received it, you never discussed it. Who knows what you think about that capital plan? And it has actually disappeared, so far as I can tell, from the website. So you are going to be working on a capital plan discussion tonight without benefit of ever having discussed the larger picture of what the manager's required to do, which is to give you a five-year lead time on that. I want to talk also tonight about the way in which you folks seemingly ignore things that really our governing board matters the follow-through on. Mr. Lynch, the other day, indicated to you that he had been asked to make two major reports to the state comptroller, Matthew Boxer. I know Matthew Boxer, I think he's, well, if you take a look, if you Google him, you will find him the one person in the state government right now who's not under any attack whatsoever. He has had an extraordinary, an extraordinary tenure. He is being replaced, of course, by the governor, by someone who I would consider completely ill-prepared to take on the job. But I rather suspect that this end will be a little slow to move forward on that very important job. What you were told by Mr. Lynch the other day was that that very excellent, both fiscal analyst and legal analyst, had raised questions, I had no idea where they came from, about your bidding processes. And you didn't follow up with a single question. I don't understand why. I want to talk also about the fact that on October 22nd, as simply part of the consent agenda, you had a resolution that called for your township attorney to completely change the way in which you hire an attorney. He changed to a new firm. I hope that you folks gave due diligence to finding out whether or not the firm from which, which has now been collapsed and from which your attorney now works is in fact one you want to be working with. We know one thing about it, which is, and this came out frankly in the manager's meetings with, in November, that none of you went to, that in fact, Mr. Turetz is going to have to absent himself from defending this township in respect of the, by far, the largest lawsuit it has that affects the way in which the township's fiscal situation is functioning. The Glen Point, the whole Glen Point complex, also called a variety of things in the attorney's invoices, which I have been, I have been reviewing fairly carefully. And I am very concerned that the expertise and resources that you have put into defending against that case are suddenly no longer available to you. Why? Because the firm into which Mr. Turetz took his firm and took your contract happens to be in a building that is owned by the people who own Glen Point, and so that is why Mr. Rupp left the other day when that presentation from Glen Point was made. That frankly is a figure at least as large, and certainly if it were to occur in one year, we were to lose that in one year because you didn't have adequate representation. That would far, far outstrip anything that the folks who are coming back and arguing that they're now prepared to build a building, which they've had authority to build for the last seven years, and people have taken credit for it having been built and it never having appeared. That is not what a governing body is supposed to be doing. I have pointed out things that you need to be taking account of, and I want to say just one more thing. I have tonight, and I will give to you, a checklist that that state comptroller has developed for the way in which you should manage your attorney. And by and large, you haven't done anything that he recommends in his best practices list. I would suggest to you that if you want any kind of credibility in this town, you darn well better figure out how to go through that checklist. It's pretty straightforward. Thank you. I'll bring that up.
Glenn?
Good evening. Lillian Lewis, TNEC. I want to first say that I do agree with Mr. Rose that many of the residents here, they cannot afford the increase of this, I just read in the paper, the 3.1 now, because someone is saying it's more and more like 5-point something, and that's an impossible increase for residents here, those working, also those who are retired. The last council meeting, Councilman Pruitt brought up a suggestion that you need to overhaul, look at the entire town for getting in ratables in businesses. And I know you mentioned the 2006 plan and the master plan, but it seems like you just glossed over very quickly. So I want to know what follow-up has been done with that? Then Manager Browden mentioned that the New Jersey state has some type of economic free training that would help towns with trying to get business into the town, and that was completely ignored. So I want to know what type of follow-up are you doing with that? Because if we can get in some decent ratables, that would offset the taxes for these residents, our residents, including myself. And there are different areas I see in town that are just empty lots, that we could have good businesses here that would help us. So what are you doing? What kind of follow-up? Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no hands, close good and welfare. Couple comments that I have, and then go back to my colleagues. Mr. Rose raised some questions regarding the police and fire dispatch connection. And so just to clarify a few things, currently, we have two dispatch operations in town. There's dispatch at police headquarters and there's dispatch at fire headquarters. Currently, a staffing level of five, or the equivalent of five full-time firefighters, operate 24/7 dispatch at fire headquarters. The eight civilian dispatchers that are proposed to be hired in this budget are to replace that and consolidate dispatch at police headquarters. So it's not, you wouldn't put police back on the street by hiring these, even though it's in the police budget, you'd be putting firefighters off the desk, back on trucks, theoretically. So just to clarify that, there's a little bit of crossover between those departments. To Mr. Stone, obviously, he presented more than, you know, was able to study while he was speaking, but one of the items in his presentation that was just given to us is why is the, why is this higher than the 3.11 shown in the manager's first slide? We have no answer. And I would say, well, you're right, because we can't have an answer until a question is asked. I thank you for bringing this way of looking at the tax increase, the levy increase, and the tax rate increase to our attention. And I would like to ask the manager, obviously not off the cuff tonight, but for our next budget meeting, to be able to address Mr. Stone's math. I'm not going to put you on the spot at all tonight, but at our next budget meeting, if you can be prepared to address the questions raised here.
I just want to address one thing. I think I made it quite clear in my presentation what it is that we were discussing and what I was proposing and presenting to the council. My first slide talks about appropriations. I stayed away from the discussion and I, we don't have enough information to accurately come up with what the tax levy is going to be and what the rate is going to be. We don't even know what our revenues are going to be for 2014, which could impact the levy. So I think I made it clear, I talked about it, I tried to emphasize it, I used the words appropriations, I used the word spending, I even had a slide that explained the difference. Okay? So I'm clearly talking about appropriations. When we're putting together a budget on December 24th, before we know what our revenues are, we're talking about appropriations. We're not talking about the levy and we're not talking about how much revenue we have yet, we don't know. Okay? So that's my answer.
Okay. To address the question that Mr. Powers raised regarding our law firm and potential conflict with a relationship with Glen Point, well, the attorney is presenting his legal budget, so I'll ask the attorney to address that at that time. And then, Ms. Lewis, I agree, taxes are too high. And I think that there's some significant things that we need to look at.
Time's up.
That was the rest of your time, by the way. And I appreciate it. But I think, I think we need to take a very serious look at the way in which we deliver services. There are very few dollars in our budget, and as we're going to go through, we'll see very clearly, there are very few dollars that are not directly related to the delivery of some service to our residents. And so ultimately, what we're going to have to do is decide what can we make do without or what can we make do with less. There are some efficiencies that can be had, but those are small, Mr. Rose. Ultimately, we're going to have to decide to tighten the belt and make do with less. We can't have everything we want. It costs about $71 million to have everything we want. We can't afford it. And so the question is, how far down is the difference between what we want and what we need? And can we come together with a, with a plan and a strategy for being able to do that within the confines that we operate? And so that's what this process is about. And I would encourage you and every other resident, when we talk about the budget for 11 months out of the year, generally, all of us here from, from the residents, that taxes are too high. When we get into budget season, there's very few people that come up to the microphone and tell us what they're willing to do without. And so that's the concern, or that's the difficulty that we're presented with, is no one wants to pay high taxes. I certainly don't want to pay high taxes. I believe that our taxes currently are too high. But there are very few people that come with, hey, I'm willing to do without this, or I'm willing to do with less of that so that we can address the taxes. And so I put a challenge out, as I do to my colleagues, I put a challenge out to the residents, to begin making suggestions, to begin making recommendations, hey, these are the things that I'm going to do without. Well, maybe we can get that feedback from the residents and give us a little more guidance as we look to trim and reduce the total spending so that we can give some relief to homeowners. Start over here, Mr. Schwartz?
Yep, I want to start by answering your, your question with my thought of what I can do without, nothing. And let me explain to you why. I'm going to use Howard Rose as an example, and I always appreciate the way Howard talks in a professional, courteous manner. He made a very smart decision decades ago when he moved to TNEC. And I made that decision, the same reason why he made that decision. TNEC is a full-service community, and for that, you need to pay. And we talked about the police and the fire, we didn't talk about DPW. And we all know, I went to Bergenfield during the snowstorm, and it is mind-boggling when you have, when you go, you cross into Bergenfield, you just, your car loses all traction, as if there's some force from outside this world that just doesn't allow you to plow except if you're in TNEC. That $130, of which I will strive to get that down, or to use Mr. Stone's number, $236, the difference between being half of a family dinner for me. Whichever one it is, we're going to try to get that down. But I don't, I'll take your challenge and deny it. I don't want to reduce the DPW's budget so I can skip into a telephone pole. Not worth it, I'll skip a half a dinner. Same thing with the fire department, I'm a volunteer firefighter. I live in a paid fire department town. And I know for years, I said, oh, this is crazy, why do we have a paid fire department? You lived here once, you know why you have a paid fire department. And I know, when I pick up the phone, I want them coming, and I want them coming quick. And forgetting about the emergency aspect of it, the services that are provided, checking, checking up on seniors, I mean, I've been on ambulance calls with the fire, dozens of calls where something's not right on a wake-up call, the fire department senses and they call the ambulance. You don't get that in a volunteer town. I would be fired already if that were the case. I would never be at work. Same thing with the police. I mean, you want to hear police response, time you pick up the phone, they're there, they're there. Bogota, last I checked, and I'm sure the police chief could, I think there's one officer and a sergeant on the road at all times. That's what you get in Bogota. Once again, half a meal. I don't want to pay the $130 more, I don't want to pay the $236 more, but if I have to, I will. Because I don't, I moved here for those reasons. Library, we can strip that, we can probably save some, we can probably bring this budget down to zero. Let's strip all the excess in the library. Let's, let's do these simple cuts. The rec center, we heard from the rec department last week, no more rides for seniors. You want to go to the doctor? Call a cab, pay for a cab. Why should I pay for that? But you know what? I don't, for that half a dinner, I have no problem for that senior that all of a sudden has, has a social security issue, can get that free ride on my dime, I'm fine with that, I'll skip the half a meal. But I moved to TNEC for a reason, and I don't want to hear the complaint of, what's with the burglaries going on? I called the police, they never come. Well, you know what? You saved the $130. And no, don't want to hear that, and I don't want to hear from my wife or my children as well. We'll try to get that number low, but I take your challenge and I respectfully deny it.
Dr. Pruitt?
I don't know if I can be, I don't know if I can be as dramatic and as elucidative as you are, but here's, here's a concern that I have. Everybody wants everything, and nobody wants to pay for it. We must look at other means of moderating the homeowner tax in this town. And I got the, the printout on the properties owned by the municipality, and there's over 100 pieces of land that might be used for something else. We have to look at that. There are hundreds of businesses in this town that need to be looked at. I'm not, I don't have the answer. I just want to do the research because even though it would cost a significant amount of money to have somebody do the analysis, the long-term benefit to homeowners is real. And I'm going to continue to, to fight to have that assessment done. But let's go back to the items that were raised in good and welfare. We must know in January how the Glen Point situation is going to be defended. Now, the Glen Point people, they're trying to reduce their taxes, and they have big bucks and the best lawyers around to work towards getting their taxes reduced. We've got to find a way to get the kind of legal services that can defeat them. So Mr. Turetz moved his organization, so whoever it is that is going to be defending us needs to be identified and work with so we don't get caught sleeping at the wheel. The other thing that worries me a little bit, I don't, you know, we sit up here and we listen to people, and sometimes you don't like what they say. But I, I know a lot about numbers, and I want the numbers to add up the same way. So I don't know what Mr. Stone was talking about, I don't know what the manager's talking about. I don't know what the manager's talking about. But when we talk about the same thing, the same tally has to be shown. I don't know what the differential between what he said is and what the differential is between what Mr. Browden said. But in just plain old arithmetic, I want the numbers to match up with what we're talking about. And I think that the manager should look back at them to make sure that they do. One of the slides in this presentation talks about what things meet the requirements to be under cap and what things in our budget are not required to be under cap. Now, Mr. Browden prepared a slide to show that, but I think we need another one to be a little clearer. That these things have to be under 2% and those things can be above 2% and why. I think that would be informative to the community and it might help us to, to help people understand the budget process. That's enough.
Yeah, not, not a whole lot. Everything's been pretty much touched on. I think that Councilman Schwartz said it very well. In terms of the services that the community has been used to over the years, both from a public safety perspective, from a public works perspective, from a, from a recreation perspective, from a seniors perspective, from a sports perspective. You know, we're, we're a, we're a full-service town and services cost money. And as you pointed out, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think it's important that while we, we struggle every year with trying to figure out what, if any, services we'd like to cut. And I don't want to cut any services. You know, we have to, you know, try to get input from the public. And the public comes here and, you know, explains to us how they feel about the budget. You know, how the numbers may be wrong, how the numbers may be right, how we're in for, you know, a rude awakening and so on and so forth. But, you know, I would like to hear, you know, hear more from the public as to, you know, which ser, which, which services would you like to actually cut? We'd like to hear that from you. I think that the council would like to hear that. And Dr. Pruitt, I think you're right. I mean, there was, Mr. Soan was talking about the tax levy, which we have no clue as to what it's going to be yet. Okay? And then what he, you know, what he pointed out to us on the slide was talking about the spending, our appropriations, what we're looking to spend. So those are, you know, as you know, there's a two, I mean, from your history, your, your experience and your numbers experience on the board of it, you know that that's, those are two completely separate things because we have no idea how much money is coming in in terms of revenue. That's, that's really, I really, really would like to hear. You know, we're, we're a full-service town. And that's, that's, you know, that's what, that's what we, I hope we continue to be. And, and, and hopefully we can, you know, with, you know, proposals such as the Glen Point and other development proposals and any other proposals that might generate revenue from the township, hopefully we'll be able to look at them, decide which ones we like and move them forward to, as you say, Dr. Pruitt, you know, try to get some relief to our homeowners.
Attorney Parker?
Sure. I don't want to belabor the point, but Ms. Lewis, I definitely agree with you that I think the budget increases to a high. However, as has been already indicated by many of my colleagues, the budget that has been presented to us is to maintain the services that we currently have and that residents have expressed, well, residents that I've spoken to have expressed that they would like to maintain. Anytime in the last seven years that I've been a council member that we have even, not even made a decision about making any type of cut, you have whatever constituency who uses that service pack the council chambers and give us all the reasons why we shouldn't cut that service. It's a very difficult balancing act because we are a full-service community and people enjoy the services that we provide. I enjoy the services that we provide. And when I visit other municipalities, many don't have all that we offer to our residents. And I think that that's, that's what makes Teaneck unique. And it does come with a cost. The only way that we're going to be able to make any significant changes is by getting additional revenue, which is another issue. Whenever we start talking about development, you have people coming and saying, this can't be too high. I don't want to lose this. I don't want to lose all the conveniences. I would love to hear from people to hear exactly what it is that they're willing to live without, whether it be a billboard at the tip of, of Teaneck, whether it be having a 14-story building on the south side of, of Teaneck where we already have commercial development. It's, it's, it's a difficult, difficult balancing act. But we can't have it all. We can't, we can't have a full-service community and not want to build up. You know, it, it's, it's difficult. It's very, very difficult. When I look at the budget, the only new amenity that's, that's been added is to hire park rangers, which I don't support, to protect the new field that was just, that's in the process of being developed at VOT Park. And adding, and I'm talking about with respect to salaries, and adding a construction official, which is something that is desperately needed and probably should not have been taking out, taken out the budget a couple of years ago. But it's a balancing act. And we, we, I challenge residents to contact us and let us know what, what services we're willing to deal without. It's not up to us as seven people to make that decision. We want to hear from you because the residents are ultimately the people who pay the price. So I'm hoping that we will be able to cut some to make it more bearable. But it's, it's difficult. It's very, very difficult.
Excuse me, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to add with the, an issue under, under good and welfare, an issue was brought up about the controller making inquiry into bidding. The controller did not make inquiry into bidding of the field because there's some issue involved or something was done wrong. There, when contracts are over a certain amount, and I believe that number's a million, these contracts automatically get reported to the controller's office. So the controller did not make inquiry here because there were some irregularities with the bid. It's a normal inquiry. Contracts over a certain amount get reported to the controller's office.
Thank you. So moving on with our agenda in our budget discussion, first up, we have a review of our legal services. And Mr. Turrick, if you can walk us through.
I'd like to address that question on the Glen Point taxes.
Please.
The council should know that the case is on hold. The court spans the conflict and the court is waiting for counsel to select a substitute attorney to handle that. All the material that has been prepared, all the material that has been prepared for this case will be turned over to the new council. You'll have the benefit of all that material. All the expert witnesses are the same expert witnesses. Their work will be prepared, has been prepared. There's been exchanges in court up to this particular point in time. And I don't think you'll have any problems in terms of a substitute to question. Counsel should act and decide who it wants to use. You have an opportunity to pick whomever, whomever you wish and use whatever process you wish to choose. But you will have the benefit of whatever work has been done today. And I don't think there'll be any detriment to the town. You have the ability. It's very nice to hear that Mr. Powers had confidence in us to continue with the case. But, but he should be happy that he has another counsel to neutralize. So with that, I'd like to make my presentation. I had prepared a written document that I asked, I don't know if the clerk has handed it out, similar to what we've done before. He's, he's put it up. Page, page one is just a explanation of the non-billable hours, the retainer, what's covered by the retainer, what's covered by the billable work. Page two is statistical information in terms of how we determine the budget, what drives our determination of the budget. And we compare it to the previous two years dealing with different categories of cases that were in the fall of, in the fall of activity when the budget is prepared to be. And this data, current data, has a 1114. And it indicates, you can see it indicates the 13 different categories of different type of...
Mr. Turrick, could you hold that mic, please, so, so we can make sure?
On, on different type, different type of cases. And there's some numbers here which you can get a read for, which show a trend. And it's particular item number 13. If you look at item number 13, notices of tort claims. Notices of tort claims predict what people may be doing in terms of filing litigation in the coming period of time. And if you could see, in 211, we had 28 open items. And in 212, we had 60. 60 was a huge number of notices of tort claims, which was a result of storms and sandy, et cetera. So that's, if you look at this year, what we have open right now, in 213, only nine notices of tort claim which have been filed. So there's a potential of nine lawsuits being filed as a result of that. We still are in the statute of limitation of the 60. So you, we don't know yet whether, how many of those 60 will file a lawsuit. So that's a potential area that you have to concern yourself. And there's no way of predicting. And there's no way of predicting how severe or how significant those particular lawsuits may be. I also want to point out to one item, item number five, under the category of labor overtime. And I have an asterisk on that. And that is the PBA, the police suit dealing with the Fair Labor Standard Act, the dying and dawning case, which we have spoken to many times before. Now, we've won that case at the lower court on a motion for summary judgment. And we were hoping that that case would be over. However, the plaintiffs, the policemen and the policemen's union did file an appeal to the Third Circuit, which was argued in October on that. We're hoping that the Third Circuit will affirm the lower court ruling and that should be the end of the case. However, if the Third Circuit, for some reason, remands that case, we don't believe they'll, they'll issue a direct verdict, but they, the potential here is they remand that case for a trial. If that case has to be trialed, we're going to have in excess of 90 plaintiff witnesses, not county expert witnesses. You are looking at a very, very significant lawsuit that will be continuing. No numbers in our budget are projected concerning that lawsuit. So that could skew any of the numbers going into 214, should that happen. We expect a decision on that momentarily. It can come tomorrow, but it also could come in six months. You just don't have an answer on that. So I, I asterisk that to indicate that that could skew any budgetary figures going forward over the next, in 2014. And it's almost definitive that we'll have a decision in 2014. So I wanted to point that out to you. So that's, that's data, statistical data. You have tax court data and historical data at the bottom. When you turn to page, page three, these are actual numbers in terms of litigation between Genova Burns and our law firm over the years dealing with different categories of cases. And it's the next page. I mean, the category of cases which we, we break down for purposes. Genova Burns is obviously our labor council. And items, items which we have handled, insurance, general, general cases, county tax cases, state court taxes, and the retainer. And if you read across, you can see the numbers going across to compare them for previous years. And this year's total was $854,238, which was lower than last year's of 2012, which was $905,304. And the total, the totals for... That column, I know it's total estimated for 2014. The total estimates for 2013, this is the actual amount of monies that we spent, which was $866,000, 866,000.
I'm sorry, so the 854 was 2013 budget and the 866 is 2013 actual?
That's actual. Correct. That is, that is, that is actual. 860. The last column is, is actual money spent for services, January 1 through December 31, 2014.
13.
And we recommend, the bottom line, we recommend for the budget, the $950,000, which I think is the same. If you turn the next page, these are also items which are charged to the legal budget. And these are items which are really outside of the control of either Genova Burns or myself. And some items have zeros in it, other items, we don't anticipate any money, but they cover the prosecutor you have to deal with. You have, at one point in time, you had a lawsuit dealing with Dean Kozinski. We show no monies for that projected. So it's pretty self-explanatory as to, as to what, what the categories are and what we may expect for 2014.
Just for, just for the...
Let me just go back, Councilman Augustin. There's a typo, a total estimate is for 2014 on page, on, on page...
No.
No, I'm sorry. Total estimated is the actual amount, it should be actual amount spent in 2013.
No, it should be actual, not...
It's not as, it's actual. Correct. It should be actual.
Okay. On, on your page four, just for the, for the benefit of the public, if we can just go down that column and, you know, we, we may be familiar with those names or what those services are. But if we could just shed some light on...
You have, you have the prosecutor who represents the township in prosecuting cases in municipal court. Dean Kozinski in 2011 and 2012, there was a lawsuit concerning his position. Harold Ritfo is the attorney for the planning board and the board of, and the board of adjustment. Weber Gallagher is the, the outside law firm that the insurance company assigns to a case when they designate who the attorney should be. Dennis Kohler is the public defender. Appraisal Systems, which is listed in tax department, in previous years, appraisals were paid out of the legal budget. I think the manager has moved that to a different...
And that was appraisals for fighting or defending tax appeals?
That is, that is correct. Or the revaluation as well. McNerney Calmo is our expert appraiser, who's used as an expert witness in most of the time in state tax court or significant residential appeals. Rogut is the, is bond counsel, special bond counsel. And even though we have a line item for him, what I don't have here, and I don't know it, many times in the bond referendums, the money is coming out of the bond issue. So there's a, there's a revenue component to that that I'm not familiar with or have access to. Hanrahan was an outside attorney who defended the township in the Toffler lawsuit. And we, we have nothing budgeted for him. Guston's suit, Guston's suit cost us $3,500 to, when Mr. Guston was a defendant in the suit. Price Geigel is the town's planner. And he's become more active as the town is looking at more development. He, this is, we paid him, we paid him this year for projects, $30,200. I projected you'll pay him a little more next year, considering that you have some development projects and master plan issues on that. And then there's the miscellaneous line items. There's publications, there's various items that the chief financial officer has to pay out that they charge to this particular line item, which is comprised of many different items. And that's the presentation.
Okay. As we, as we look from 2013 actual to 2012 spending, 2011, we've seen somewhat significant drop-off in the legal budget, but want to make clear that it may not be as much of a reduction as it looks like because now some things are charged to, to different accounts. Is that correct?
Not on, not on page, not on, not on page three. No. Page three is fairly consistent. I think one of the reasons for dropping off, we've been doing more of the work for than Genova Burns and we do it at a lower rate. Genova Burns charges $200 an hour. We charge $150 an hour. Genova Burns charges $200 an hour, we charge $150 an hour. And we've been taking more, more work from that through the manager's direction, and we've been able to lower the bills a little overall, overall.
Excellent.
On that. But, but page three is, I would say, is relatively consistent. There's no new line items, even though I try to break out, Boja and Boja is the attorney that we've used when there's been a conflict of interest. For example, when different council people might have a tax appeal, or people who I've represented over the years in TNEC, Boja, Boja has been the attorney that handled those matters. We, we don't recommend them doing the Glen Point. I think you need a larger firm to handle the Glen Point suit.
Okay. Now, of the dollars that we spend, whether it's 2013 or past or looking forward to 2014, how much of our legal budget is based on cost for the town suing people or entities?
I believe in, since I've represented the town in 2000, since 2000, that, don't tell me exactly, I can only recall two suits which we brought this year where we were the plaintiffs. And those two suits were 635 Norfolk Street and 1116 Congress Avenue. And that had to do with, I guess you'd call it quality of life issues for those neighborhoods.
More, more like law enforcement.
635 Norfolk was using the property as a hotel and a transient area. And 116 Congress, the individual was using the property for a, a club, dispensing liquor and other activities, and basically intimidating the entire neighborhood. And we couldn't satisfy the problem with the current laws, with police activity, and the manager and the council authorized us to go ahead with the novel theory on land use. And we were successful. Congress is still fighting us. That case is not over. 635 is over, but the Congress Avenue case is dormant. They're not fighting it vigorously, but it's still an open case, and periodically there's some activity on that. But there's a permanent injunction which favors the township at this time. There, I mean, I don't want to be held that maybe 2001 or 2002, there was a plaintiff action for somewhere, but I...
But by and large, our legal budget is based on other people bringing legal action against the town, not the town taking that first affirmative.
Well, the legal action, legal action against the town, and the challenges in bidding, in bidding procedures, and questions raised by citizens that the council wants me to look into, which is non-litigation, those...
But we don't go around suing people?
No, we don't go around suing people.
Okay, good. Also remember, Mr. Schwartz, I'm just going to work through.
On the planner item, sorry. On the planner item with $40,000, just two questions. One, why, why is this on the legal budget, not, let's say, a building department budget?
Only because it's charged to the legal line item. That's the question you're going to have to ask the manager and the chief financial officer. I'm only responding to what's in, it's, it's listed on the legal line item.
Now, other towns have a lot, other towns have a planner at, at present at a lot more, a lot more meetings. And I think as we have some large development projects coming up, we're going to be using the planner a lot. Why isn't the presenter or the plaintiff, whoever, or the applicant paying these fees?
I have made a recommendation to this council that the town's planner and the town's engineer, or consulting engineer, should be at every board of adjustment or planning board hearing at least of a significant nature. And that course can be passed off to any applicant.
Okay.
And we're one of the few towns that doesn't follow that particular practice. But we can't dictate that. That's dictated by the planning board and the board of adjustment. But I think...
But we can dictate that the fee be passed along?
Only if, no, it has to be part, it's part of the board of adjustment or planning board application. They, and this planner here is, when we use the planner, it's not charged to the planning board or the board of adjustment, et cetera.
No, but the $40,000 is for the planning board appearing before, also before the, sorry, before the planner?
It's for work, it's for work that I think the council or the manager asked the planner to do.
Got it, I see. So we should look at the fees.
But separate from the planner's involvement at the semi-mostly autonomous board of adjustment and planning board?
That is correct.
So the board of, if I get, the board of adjustment or planning board can ask an applicant, can require, or can require an applicant, a major applicant, to, to pay for the township planner and/or consulting engineer to be present?
These fees, these fees deal with, when we've asked them to look at the reexamination of the master plan or the master plan amendment, or when we were working with World of Wings, or we were working with, whether we were to do something with 227, that's, we've asked the planner for his advice and his recommendations, et cetera. That's what this money and this budget covers. It, it covers activity that he helped us with, with COA, affordable housing, that comes out of the council, that comes out of the legal budget of the, of the council.
But what I'm saying is that if a major developer were to come in with a major development proposal to the planning board, or the board of adjustment for that matter, those individual boards could require that applicant to pay for the township's planner to be present.
Absolutely.
And what is the process for that? Do we have the authority to mandate that? No, it's just...
We don't have the authority to mandate.
Thank you. Detective Chris?
Yeah, sadly, two, two things. One is, that case that you talked about that could be exhaustive in terms of cost, which, what was that about?
It's a question that the police feel that the time they dress and prepare for, for work should be compensated. It's not compensated now. So if they get dressed at home, and it takes 15 minutes to get dressed, they should get paid for 15 minutes. And if they stay after work to do certain things for their uniforms, they should get paid for that. And they say by adding those hours to the normal hours that they work, they exceed the number of hours that get paid at regular time, and they should be paid overtime because they've gone over a 40-hour, a 40-hour week.
A 50-hour week, no, for uniform services, correct?
Well, I would fairly understand that. There are a lot of exceptions.
Exception for a uniform service.
The uniform services, et cetera. And so far, we've proven that we were correct based upon the court's order. They're fighting that.
Okay, so we're on the right side of that one, and they still have an appeal?
Right now, we're on the right side of that one.
Okay.
Now, we, the, the case was dismissed, and they've appealed.
We got summary judgment in the case.
Correct.
All right. I have one other question, and this is more delicate, and I'm, I'm anxious about it. You're our legal counsel most of the time, okay? And now you work for a company that is an adversary because they represent Glen Point. How do we get from you or from somebody you know or people that we know, the names of an attorney that can beat your company in the Glen Point issue? I mean, this is real stuff, Tom.
My, my firm is not representing Glen Point.
Okay.
They're not representing Glen Point against the township of TNEC. They're not involved in any shape, manner, or form with this tax appeal. They have the same conflict of interest on the tax appeal that I would have on the tax appeal. So, so there's no, they're not involved with Glen Point and TNEC. Have zero to do, do with it. You could request, I mean, there are, there are firms which have very good reputations dealing with significant tax appeal cases. There are, as you can, I'll go out for a request for proposals, if you want.
Can you just say what the conflict, the conflict is tenancy?
Correct.
Right, the conflict is tenancy.
Your firm is simply a tenant of a building owned by Glen Point. They are not attorneys for Glen Point or Glen Point Development.
They may have, they may have been in the vast attorneys, I have no idea.
But the, but the conflict is the fact that you're a tenant of their...
As soon as I consider a tenant, I...
Thank you.
Okay, we, we...
They have nothing to do with, they have nothing to do with TNEC.
Okay, we, we need to be clear about the fact that we're not in conflict with them because they're going to be supporting an adversary in terms of Glen Point.
Look, I'm not going to tell you they're not going to do work for Glen Point in the future.
I'm talking about in terms of the TNEC case.
As far as TNEC is concerned, and as far as the tax appeal is concerned, they have nothing to do with that case, with that case.
So the other thing is, we need, with all deliberate speed, to find an attorney to defend us in that case.
That is correct.
And not sit on it.
I think that's clear.
Yeah.
Councilman Smith?
No, actually, I just want to, you talked about breaking down the, the, Deputy Ray Dawson, you mentioned breaking down the various groups that are components in, that go into the legal bill. I just remember that, you know, approximately 20% of the, of the legal bill is labor-related. Just remember that. It's not all, you know, there, there's insurance issues and, and tax appeal and stuff like that, but, but it, you know, 20%, a pretty consistent, you know, 20% of, of the legal bill is, is, is labor-related. I think people should understand that.
I just want to go back to that question, because I don't want to misunderstand. Witty and Bantha, which is a 100-year-old firm, has in its head, Witty and Bantha, which is a 100-year-old firm, has represented Glen Point, or I shouldn't say Glen Point, sans Zari's interests in the past, and items never against TNEC. I don't want to be...
In account, sure. In accounts 220, the labor council negotiations, the department request is 300,000, the manager approved 300,000. And in 2013, we budgeted for 300,000, and we've only spent $80,517.06. So I'm curious, are we expecting a huge invoice from November to December?
No, we're, we're not expecting a huge invoice. Let me just get to that page. We're not expecting a huge invoice.
Forty-three.
Page 43.
Yes, mhm.
I could tell you what that, what their last invoice would be, if that's in the number. Give me a second.
It's, it's not that we're, we're, we're not, we're not necessarily expecting any invoices, but this is, this is really one account, and it's, it's difficult. In, in this particular account, I think we spent 909,000 or something like that. We were under the 929 number, so it's, it's possible that, you know...
But I'm, I'm speaking specifically to the sub-account, not the total.
Sub-account 220, labor negotiations.
Yes, mhm.
We, we budgeted 300, but as far as spent, January through November, we spent 80. Is there expectation to be billed? Is there expectation to be billed in December for 200, 220,000? Or is that account on track for being that far under budget?
And if it is, why aren't we making some adjustments? Or that's something we need to look at?
Well, one of the things is, is we're going to need the entire 929. I mean, whether it goes to the labor attorney or whether it's for some other labor cause, that's the amount that we're spending. He's recommending 950, okay? I'm only putting in the same amount.
But, but Councilman Parker's question, and maybe Mr. Terrence can speak to it more clearly, is, we budgeted 300. What was the expectation when we budgeted 300?
I can't tell you what the manager budgeted. I only can go what I recommended. I don't know how he breaks it down.
So you're recommending a total overall number?
It's 950.
Manager breaking it down as a sub-accounts on, on his...
And I could tell you, so you know of the Burns...
But even if you look at two, sub-count 230, we budgeted 620, 604,000, and we spent 468,000.
Yeah, so where is the, where is the sub-account that we're over by that, by that corresponding number? Mr. Brown, for, can you address that?
It's page 43, our budget.
The budget's available online and in the library.
It's page 43.
Forty-two or forty-three. And which account is it? I'm sorry.
It's 230.
I'm sorry, 155.
I mistakenly charged some costs to some insurance that I wanted to charge to them.
So we need updated sheets.
Can we get these pages then reprinted to, to account for that adjustment?
Yeah, but we have a true, we have the true report that I gave today that's all now, that's close to what we've been analyzing. It's just hard to try and get all the sound out of the house to get them together.
I know, we start, we start repairing this in November, and it's, you know, it's just a snapshot in time.
Right, and I haven't gone through and said, oh, wait, is that where is everything? I haven't really looked at it.
Okay, well, can we, can we please get, get that done so we can...
It is, it's, well, we can't reprint the pages that I would just take from, we have a...
I'm, I'm sorry, which pages?
We can have an amendment to these two pages, 43, to, to the account.
Can we just, can we just correct it?
I'll give you a summary of everything that was spent. I think it's better, I give you a summary of everything that's spent. I find, all of this work that we're doing is going to work up into one single document, which will be the final written document that goes to the state, which will take all of this, and this is, this is gone.
No, we understand that.
Right.
But the, but the question is, is we're able to see it.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to give you a summary of all of the accounts with the spends.
Right. And then if we can get the corresponding pages in this budget book updated to reflect the changes that are represented in that summary. I think...
No, because that's not what we're, we're only presenting. Those, those numbers were, you know, they're preliminary.
I, no, I understand that. So let's get the actual year-to-date number in this book so that when we're working from the budget, and this is the way we've done, we've done this in the past, where we've had pages reproduced as new information's available, so that we have a single document that is a working document for us, as opposed to eight different summaries and trying to relay back to budget line items when we're making recommendations for changes. So if we can please have the budget book updated with those real numbers.
Mister Deputy, I just want to, column with, that's mark 213, is January 1 through December 31 services, which will include the January, whatever's on your bill, whatever's on the bills list for January, I don't know if it's, for the, for the, January bill, it covers December, and that's in these items.
It's in the 854.
It's in the 854.
Or the 864, I'm sorry.
And Genova Burns, we just received their final voucher for these, for December.
But 866 is not 929, and...
No, not 866, 854 is the 2013 actual budget.
The budget, but the...
Actual expenditures.
Wait a second, no, you just said before that the 866 is the total...
That's for 214, that's, that's what we're estimating, if you look at it.
No, you said it was actual for 213.
No, it's, it's estimated.
You said to correct total, estimated to total actual.
Actual is 213, it's 213 column. And what I'm estimating for 214 is to the right.
Okay.
Wait a minute, I'm confused.
Yeah, that's, that's not what we, we just said.
Can you bring that back up? Yeah. So the 2013 line is 854,000.
That's budgeted or actual spent?
That's actual, then.
Actual expenditures for services through December 31.
Okay. Total estimated should just be corrected to say total estimated 2014?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Absolutely correct.
No, I understand.
Okay.
So you're asking for an increase from 854 to 860, 866?
I believe that's, that's a, that's a reasonable number.
Okay. And the additional is the salary?
That is what's on the next page.
For, gotcha, now I understand. But, okay, and we've requested the updated sheets.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Terrence? From anyone?
So then moving to the self-insurance budget, I know that that's, I don't think it's on the agenda, but does that mean that those pages are incorrect because they were charged incorrectly, the, we build things?
Those will need to be addressed. What, what I'm going to do is, at, at a minimum, as we move forward in the process, and we're reviewing each of these budgets, I'll get those spent numbers updated.
Okay.
So, so that you have them.
What's the account number on the self-insurance? What? What's the account number on self-insurance? I'm sorry, two...
210, 210.
Page 53. Right, so we have two different, we have an account 210 that, and a sub-account 210, and is that how the mistake was made?
No, there's just, um...
Where they just...
I charged the, the costs to the wrong account, not understanding.
The history of...
Of how things were...
Okay.
So, once I understood what was going on, I, and I'm sorry that we're here from the beginning, just because I compromised all the tools.
But if, if, if there's... But if there's, but if all the totals are wrong, then they should be compromised.
Exactly.
Correct. They should be gone.
If...
But they're through November, and that's why...
Right, but we're now in January, so we know, we don't have to guess anymore. We actually have the numbers.
But we have a document that is going to break between the two. It's going to, any one of these, it's going to give you the same exact info, information, but it's just going to give you your updated spend.
But it's not going to do it in a way that's workable for the council to be flipping from one document to another to something that we can actually work with. So is there a majority of council that would like to direct staff to update the budget book with the actual numbers?
Yes, if we have to update the whole book.
So I retire and file that whole section, put all the numbers up.
Any number that's in the book now that you know to not be accurate, please update.
Well, the number is accurate because it's all out through November 30.
Okay.
So that's my point.
So you want me to do everything?
I would like the budget book to reflect actual known numbers as of today.
Okay, there's two issues here.
I'm going to say the cost benefit of that, as opposed to you just getting plans in another document for December, but I will do what I think you're asked me to do. I'm trying to make sure that we stay online and provide just one...
How much staff time would be involved in the request I just made?
Update the entire tab five.
How much staff time?
It takes time, it took us months to put it together.
There are two issues here.
I'm going to say it takes us weeks just to put the November numbers in.
There's two issues here.
It's all spent, the further we get away from the actual data and have to take that data and restate it into a format so that it's comfortable for you guys, we do this so that it's supported by all just patients and the comments and things like that.
I get that. How much staff time would be involved in the request that I just made?
It would be myself and Eason involved, and I have to prove it, and it would pull us away from things that I think that, I believe that if you could just look at maybe the other documents, and if you tell me that that document is useless to you, then I will update it.
Okay, again, let me ask the question about how much staff time would be involved?
About me?
Like full 40-hour work week of doing nothing but this? I mean, like, how much time is actually involved?
It's not going to be a full week of doing nothing but this, but with the time that is, it would take about a week because you couldn't, I can't possibly deck it for you.
No, I understand that. About how many hours of staff time would be involved in updating this?
Twenty hours.
Okay. I think we'll take a look at the summary, but my feeling is the council's going to want to see that, and I don't think it's necessarily an inappropriate allocation of staff time.
Yes, so that we're always going to continue to do that.
But I think that there's two issues here. The issue, what you're speaking to is updating through the actual dollar amount that's been spent through December, through the end of the year. But the original question was why, you indicated that there was an error in charging, in how you charge it. That's what I would like to see, that corrected in the budget book, not all of the, because never in the past have we requested actual expenditures through 2013.
In the past, it's gotten some, and there's always been complication in our public discussion, in the public following along with what has been posted on the website, what's been available in the library. I think that this would be a process improvement as far as transparency and usability that...
The double-edged sword, I'm sorry, to make is that we have to produce this due record...
Yes, I mean, there's, and I understand that.
No, no, I'm not criticizing the way it's put together. We know that there's a snapshot in time that we have to just say we're going with what we have on hand.
Yes, and that's what I'm saying is ultimately, because of this, so I don't want you to rewrite this book to add those numbers in, produce this place where...
But what I do want is to see the corrected pages.
When will we have that summary?
Now.
I can get this for you, I can get this for you immediately. Okay, I can get this summary for you.
And the account number is...
And will that reflect the errors?
Action report.
Okay, so if we can distribute that as soon as possible to council...
And will that reflect the errors that were noted?
Yes.
Could I, could I, okay.
Doctor Brown?
Could I ask a question in terms of the software?
Yes.
Isn't the software set up so that when you change a particular number in a particular category, all the numbers behind that change also?
That's software, is we're taking that information from that software because the council is used to be presented in a book like this that has a lot of, the, for that, the, I'm trying to get the correct word.
Sub-accounts broken down.
The sub-accounts broken down with...
With the year-over-year numbers?
Not with, I'm trying to get the correct word, but all of these explanations. We can't do, our software doesn't do that. So we're taking that from the software and inputting it into a very comprehensive self-workbook and setting it up and setting things up in a framework so that, yeah, the formula is calculating, but that's all been done, so now I'm so afraid, I'm afraid that numbers fall. The further you take it away, the further there's a chance for error. So now we're dropping these December numbers, but if I lose the other numbers, and that's the issue, I say, which pages are these, these numbers from my first book? Is there anything off pages?
All right, let me, let me...
Okay, I think we've beaten this, beaten this to death. We'll get the summary at our next budget meeting if a majority of council wants to see a change, well, gives us a chance to review it, but at our next meeting, suggest we have a quick discussion about whether that summary is sufficient for moving forward or if we do want the effort put in to reproduce the budget book. All right, we'll move on now to the next item, which is the police department, a second, Mr. Brown, are you able to, in addition to whatever you distribute to council, are you going to be able to put out that information on in the library as well as the website? Or how's that going to work?
I'd have to talk to the CFO and see how we should put that out. I mean, the document that she created really is an internal use document. I got to see how...
Is there anything, is there anything, is it confidential or can't be released?
I got to look at it.
Right.
I mean, it has account numbers and all, do we got to, I got to talk you about it. Yeah, the summary can go in the...
I would just encourage you to, you know, as soon as you get it out, if you can just get whatever, whatever is in the library as well as the website as well. Because I'd hate to have Mr. Stone talking about one number that he doesn't have access to...
The other thing I wanted to, so I have just big numbers of competitors, I'm going to just keep that one document that you can get tonight, and I'm going to have big numbers corresponding exactly to what you're reading here, so that you can be able to look at that account number and say, all right, I want to see legal labor negotiations, then go right to that page on here.
Okay. All right. Chief, thank you for joining us.
How's everybody?
Just one item before we start. Losing my eyesight here. Okay, so with the police department, if you want to, if you want to start with, if you want to start with just having a brief discussion about staffing and the number of officers we're at right now and our authorized strength, if you could just enlighten the council about that?
As you know from the last meeting, we had the current authorized strength for 2013 was 96, and the manager's recommending it, and I concur with maintaining it at 96. We're currently actually at 93 employees, but even that number is not accurate in the sense sworn officers, police officers.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor, which account is, if we could add that to...
We'll start at page 59 with account 240 for the police budget.
So as I was saying, you know, the authorized strength is 96. We have actually 93 employees that are currently salaried, police employees that are salaried, police officers, but when you take out an individual that's going on terminal leave, two that are on medical leave, and one that is going out on long-term medical leave next month, it brings us down by the end of January to about 89 sworn officers.
Eighty-nine or eighty-eight?
Eighty-nine.
Ninety-three minus five?
No, ninety-three minus four.
Four on medically.
Okay, and you know, and we're also down to six dispatches with, so nine is the operating level that we have always maintained, so we're actually at six, so...
When's the last time we had nine?
The last time we had nine was in 2011.
Okay.
Right, 2011 or 2012?
So I guess that's one of the, one of the things that I want to be able to clarify for the public but for council as well, when we talk about authorized strength number, when we talk about actual staffing level, and we talk about the number that we should have or the number we had had, if we can identify clearly, we say, well, gee, we always had nine, but we haven't had nine for several years, so if we can just be clear, and you know, in every department, I think we want to have this conversation, is that we clearly understand what the current staffing level is, and when we look at some target staffing level, if we're short of that, when's really the last time we operated at that level?
Also, when we're having the discussion of salary and overtime, you need to be in tab four where we have all the staff, I'm just letting you know.
Thank you.
As Deputy Mayor Gussman would say, it's kind of like a moving target, so we try to take quick pictures. You know, we did have nine at one point in time in the end of 11 into early 12, but what happened was two of them were substandard, so we removed them from the position before they became permanent, or they actually left. And then we lost someone this past year, 2013, who felt that, you know, it wasn't a good career choice because she thought that she was going to lose her job, so she actually left and went to another township.
I just also want to add, it's, these authorized strength numbers, even trying to stay at 96, there's many obstacles in trying to stay at, you know, our targeted numbers.
Someone retires, someone gets sick, someone hits the lottery and moves on.
Right, with civil service, you know, with the police, you got to have a test, sometime they extend the lists, academies, if there's not enough people to go into an academy class, they might not have a class, so it's always a struggle for us to try to maintain a number, a particular number.
Easy for the number to go down, not so easy to get it back up.
Can you just go over those numbers again for me?
Sure. The authorized 96, we actually have 93 police officers that are salaried at this point in time that are being paid by the township. One of whom...
Do we have three that aren't?
We have four that are leaving, some for medical, three for medical, one is on their way out, planning on retiring, so that's a four additional, which brings us down to actually 89 bodies that are being compensated and we're actually getting the benefits of them working.
So from 93, we're getting, we're getting work from 89?
Eighty-nine, and that's the real problem. 96 is great, you know, and like the manager, as long as we get there at one point in time, it's great, you know, so we get 96 and two leave, okay, we fine. The problem is when we go from 96 and went down to 89, and then on the dispatch side, we're operating at 66% of our capacity, that's when you start running into deficits.
Are you talking about total police or you're not talking about officers?
No, police officers, sworn officers, just police officers, sworn police officers.
Not captains and lieutenant?
No, that's included in that.
Chief, we'll send the case, any police officers?
Yeah, that's included in that number.
Chief, sorry, just a quick question on the medical leave, we're talking about payroll in bodies, the four that are, the three that are medical, do we pay, do we pay for them or they pay under disability, meaning is that on your budget?
One of whom was injured in the performance of their duty, and the other two were on medical leave.
And medical's not on our budget?
Well, we paid them salary because they have sick time, so...
Right, but if they go past the sick time, they're on disability.
If they run out of sick time.
And hence a replacement on that person is not on our budget, it's a wash.
Correct.
All right, so when we're, so when we're preparing this budget, you know, it's a snapshot of how many people we have on a particular day, we had 94.
Two weeks later, some, two other guys could have gone on medical leave.
Yes, and I'm not including the things that the chief is telling you about the staffing issues of whether somebody is on a medical leave or something like, that's the purpose of having him here so that he can get more granular and tell you, hey, you know, I'm supposed to have 96 people, or we're showing 94 in the book, but in actuality, I really have 89. So that's what I wanted him here for, so the council could have the benefit of receiving that information.
That issue can happen at any time of the year. It could happen in November, it could happen in June, it could happen in March.
Well, we can have some incident tomorrow, something could happen, and you don't have two or three guys, someone gets hurt or something.
That's correct, but if it happens in January, it could have a significant impact on service and budget for the year. If it happens in December, not so much.
We're talking about budget, so the budget is 96 people, that's what we should talk about, the actual number of people you have, that's an internal problem.
Correct. Well, that's the number we're asking for, I think that's what the council...
Well, yeah, but the question is, is 96 a number that's a policy decision that council wants to make? Like, that's what we have, that's what we have to talk about.
Can you continue with the numbers? Thank you.
Sure, I'm okay. Manager, do you want, you want me to just go through each line or...
Are we, do we want to talk more about staffing? Do we want to talk about overtime?
Well, I want to know, we have nine dispatchers here, how many do we actually have?
Six.
Six, that's, I didn't get your numbers when you...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And civilian employees, we have?
Five.
Parking enforcement officers?
Parking enforcement, one full-time parking enforcement officer and two part-time.
Two part-time?
Two part-time.
Twenty-five crossing guards?
Yes.
And auxiliary officers?
Fifteen, but that varies up and down.
But we do have fifteen currently.
Mr. Brown, what would be, what would it be appropriate to ask the chief or maybe to talk about dispatch in general?
Yeah, we'll be prepared to talk about that at whatever time you'd like to talk about it, we're prepared.
So I think if, because we have a few different ways to go about looking at police if we want to...
We could, I mean, the reality is, if, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you look through the budget, it's so many, I mean, ours is probably the most layered and detailed, and not saying that, I am kind of proud of that, but, you know, there's one line, the machine maintenance, that's up $17,850. And that, other than that, you know, the rest of it pretty much bounces up, that's really where the change goes.
What is that, machine maintenance?
The machine maintenance covers everything from contracts on computers to our 911 dispatch, we have maintenance programs, our radio dispatch has maintenance programs, and the increase on the machine maintenance, it's our telephone service, our voice recorders, our radar, alcohol testing machines, the cars, the computers in the cars, et cetera, and the real increase is to go to a system called e-ticketing, which essentially will be a, will no longer be using traditional paper ticket books. We have a company that we're trying to contract with right now, basically that would provide us with all the equipment, all the, including the paper, the ink, the printers in the cars, and all, the fee is based on the number of summoners issued. Essentially, it's a dollar fifty per summons issued, and we issue around 17,000 summonses annually, that, you know, that number also varies, so even though this is a dollar, it's 17,850, the line increase and that, but we have some money from outside that was donated to the department that we're going to use to subsidize that so that we can keep it going.
How much have we spent in physical ticket books in the past?
It's a very small number, it's probably a couple of thousand dollars, they're actually relatively cheap, but the problem is sometimes they get caught up at the printers and we have periods where we can't get summonses and it's kind of ironic, you don't have summons, I mean, residents like that or people driving through the town and we can't write them a ticket, but other than that, it's really not good. There's a lot of advantages to the e-ticketing system, I'll cut to the chase on it, you know, besides the efficiency and effectiveness, we no longer, you can't accidentally put in the wrong driver's license number because you swipe the driver's license, it scans it, it reads it, you can't put in the wrong license plate, it's easier for our court, so there will be no lost summonses, many times our court has to dismiss summonses because they're illegible, or, you know, if you're dyslexic like myself, you invert numbers or letters and people can't use it. Furthermore, there's to be a searchable database, which in New Jersey we don't have, so if someone told you you had a license plate with 123, you can't search New Jersey's DMV, but our system, you'd be able to search 123, and if we ever ran up license plate, put it through our system like that, you'd be able to find it, and we'd be involved in another database with other municipalities, so that would actually be relatively helpful.
Do you mean that if I... If I see a car hit someone, you know, I get three digits on the plate, you can't search it in the state of New Jersey?
New York you can, but not New Jersey.
That's backwards.
You have to talk to the governor about that.
That's like 1800s, that's not backwards, that's dead hundred percent.
But like, it's, you know, it's not commonly believed.
That's ridiculous, that's just unbelievable. We should be our state, that's ridiculous.
So essentially, that's the real, that's the real increase, that makes up the whole increase in the budget, essentially, that's the largest...
So that's the, that's the operating budget, any questions on any of the specific lines on the operating budget from anyone?
I have questions in general, not about budgetary, about like projections of which money, cars, stuff like that.
are money, cars, stuff like that, but.
Cars is the next one. All right, so let's take a look at cars, actually, it's a separate account.
Yeah, actually, cars is in another account, it's a separate account.
Two forty point two, two forty dash two.
I may have missed this, but are the park ranges in that budget?
They are, so right now, we're talking about operating budget?
Okay.
We'll talk about the hour ranges in just a second.
So are we expecting an invoice of twenty thousand dollars in account number two thirteen, two forty, line two thirteen?
Wait a minute, two forty, two thirteen?
Again, this is.
Which, which number have, in two thirteen?
It's the machine maintenance.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Again, this is the whole issue that you guys just discussed earlier with our CFO, essentially, the budget, we have about, I think, three hundred dollars left in the police budget, as of two days ago when I spoke to her.
So there is an outstanding invoice of twenty thousand?
Well, there's a series, there was a series of invoices, like CFO said, that this is the end of November, so there was a lot of bills that were.
I understand that, but she also indicated that there was an error, I just want to make sure that that was not.
Unfortunately, that's not anything.
Just an issue, not an error.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so now if we can go to page seventy-three, account two forty dash two, police cars.
While we're looking at that, can I ask about the cameras in the back of the car, those are for, the cars with the cameras are for license plates scanners?
Those are license plate readers, yes.
For stolen cars?
Well, stolen cars, licenses, warrants, et cetera.
All right, are we buying more, or?
We have currently, how many more? We have three currently.
So three cruisers in operation?
Yes, we only purchased one, two were given to us under grants from the prosecutor's office, so.
How's our experience been using them as far as, you know, are they going off constantly and finding stuff we never did before?
We're not finding, we're not finding, we're not finding a lot, but what it is doing is building a database, and I'm sure some people are not thrilled about that, but it can read up to eighteen hundred license plates a minute, and it geo-maps them, so if you happen to drive by us at a certain point in time, and some issue comes up, where we're looking for you, and you say, well, I wasn't in Teaneck, well, you got a little bit of a problem, because we have you geo-mapped at that point in time, and so that's an issue. But that, so that kind of stuff we've had, and it's been beneficial to us, we've actually picked up cars, if you drive through a residential neighborhood, just general random patrolling, and a burglar happened to park his car there, and three days later, we realized we have burglary, you know, one of our burglary investigators, like Detective Kasmir Zach in the back, could check the database and find out that one of our known burglars just happened to be there at that time, so those type of things have come to a greater value.
Sort of like a frequent flyer or something?
Right, other than, you know, someone having to suspend a driver's license or something like that.
Okay, so cars themselves, so we talk about related equipment, does that include license plate scanners, is that the new package of equipment?
We're not putting that on it, because they're running around between ten and thirteen thousand dollars per car, so as you can guess, we try to buy those under other things, if we get seized assets, we try to use that, or we go to the prosecutor, we ask them.
For grants.
Give us some money for that, so we, the related equipment is basically the cages in the cars, the radios, radars, et cetera, yes, sir.
Okay, how many current, I should say, are we using Crown VIX at all for patrol now? Are we out of Crown VIX?
Patrol, we are using them for parking enforcement, and we have, I think, maybe one or two that are spare, we're using for sidewalk, or public service and such like that.
But for standard patrol work, we're not using Crown VIX?
No, we're all at.
On the charges?
Yes, sir.
How many chargers do we have now?
Good question. The charges probably, I mean, I would guess.
We started buying them in, was it two thousand nine?
Two thousand nine, two thousand ten, probably about twelve, I would say about twelve.
How many total vehicles?
Twelve, no, we have to have more than twelve.
Mark, how many total? Fifty-three vehicles.
Because I have some questions about that, and it's, I think it was twenty years old, walking through the parking lot always bothered me, obviously, there's a lot of wear and tear and everything, but if you go into the back over there, there's more cars you're looking for, but there's always a lot of cars over there, and obviously, fifty-three compared to the seven cars on the road, plus detectives and chargers, and there's a, there's a huge discrepancy, are they shot, are they broken, are they busted, or what's the?
Well, you know, it goes up and down, it varies at different times of day, if you catch us at a bad time of day, there may be a lot of cars there, if you catch us at a bad time of day, and the other way, there's not enough cars, if all of our detectives at three o'clock in the afternoon, all of our youth bureau detectives are out at all the schools, dealing with school issues, and our detectives are out on investigations, and the traffic guys are out doing school posts, there's no cars left in the parking lot, so it kind of ebbs and flows.
All right, are we looking to increase the car volume, or just maintain a stable?
This is maintain, what we do is recycle them through, we take the worst vehicles, and we auction them off, or sometimes we give them away to DPW, something like that, as a spare for something.
Yeah, are we, any reason why?
Hey, Frank.
Any reason why we're sticking with the chargers, which are beautiful cars, and obviously, you know, nothing like gunning up Cumberland Avenue at fifty miles an hour, it's effective in a charger, but a lot of town, even the state police are going to the smaller vehicles right now, a lot of the other surrounding towns, and clearly, there's a savings, which is why they're doing it, is that savings worth it, is it, I mean, there's the fuel, there's the repair, the Lumina, I don't know which car it is.
Well, the only other vehicles that are available are the Ford, which is like the Taurus, and then Chevrolet has the Lumina and the Impalas, which, you know, we're not too thrilled with, those are all front-wheel drive cars, we stay with rear-wheel drive cars for now, we do purchase V sixes, we get around.
Not the V eight.
Yeah, we don't have Hemis, and they get around fifteen to sixteen miles a gallon probably on average, which is significantly greater than the Fords that we're getting around nine, so they have been beneficial, we're always looking to do new things, we may look at buying a Ford Taurus, they have all-wheel drive Taurus, just now we did buy some SUVs that have all-wheel drive as well, but, so we're always looking to explore other options, but always, we're to mind to efficiency also.
Breaker's transferability of the rest of the gear and everything else?
Right, that's just the, every time we change vehicles, we have to buy brand-new cages, and the cages and all the outfitting, that's where the money goes, the outfitting can cost, you know, seven or eight thousand dollars per car.
Yeah, we're buying a car, we're not buying a police car.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot, the cars are twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars, maybe twenty-three thousand dollars, I'm sorry, twenty-three, and then by the time you're done, that's when you get into thirties, yeah.
Any other questions on vehicles? Okay, so now let's go to salary and wages, if we can go to budget book, tab four, page four of four, and we can talk about overtime, we're just going to take a bunch of pieces here, let's see if we can think one piece at a time. Tab four, page four of four, top half of the page.
Two forty, account two forty.
Right in the middle of that chart, police, so in two thousand thirteen, we budgeted four twenty-five, through November, overtime was five fifty-four, do we have an up-to-date year-end number for that?
Yes, sir, the total spent year-to-date at the end of the year, full year, was five hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Five sixty-seven.
Five six seven, nice number, there's six 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 dot five five.
You dropped the pennies.
Five six seven, six six six.
Five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay. Hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Why?
Probably at the beginning of the discussion, staffing was one of our biggest issues, you know, that definitely impacted us a lot, you know, and also just other variables, things that we can't control, as we talked about last week, you know, we were able, in working with our prosecutor, Prosecutor Beach, and the way they handle cases, we significantly cut down on our overtime for handling court, officers coming to court, but our overtime went up on the, having officers staff the metal detector in court, which is a valuable thing, but it just comes at a cost, again, it's an opportunity cost, you know, everything costs, so it kind of goes, we squeezed it one way, and it came out the other side, so, and that's really what we ended up with.
Right, so when we look, if we look at that hundred and forty thousand dollars, the cost of two uniformed police officers doing court security?
Yeah.
Is?
Well, like, for instance.
Just about in the neighborhood of, you could pretty much contribute almost all of that.
About seventeen percent of our overtime budget for the year was for that, roughly.
Sorry, was there a corresponding decrease with payroll, is there an account that went down, obviously, we're just looking at the overtime here, is there an account that had the surplus, can we look at that for a second, did anything go down that was offset by overtime? So for example, you're short two officers, they're not getting salary, but we're pulling it over.
No, we're still paying, these guys are on medical.
Well, but most definitely, most definitely, we've been well below ninety-six that have been budgeted, so the reality is, this is, when you're looking at salary budget, we have a profit, so to speak.
Surplus.
The surplus, yes, breakage.
And what is that number?
I don't have a breakage number.
Well, there's a surplus of government's called fund balance.
No, when we talk about salary breakage, when you go back, you know, mid-year retirements, things like.
Correct, which increases the overtime, because we need the people.
Someone retires at the top of pay scale, and they're replaced in the same budget year with someone at bottom of pay scale.
Correct.
And police can be a sixty, can be a sixty to ninety thousand dollar a year differential per person.
And I'm going to go there in a second.
Chief, four twenty-five versus five sixty-eight, in terms of overtime, do you remember what those numbers were last year, do you have those handy?
Yes.
Well, we're in the doctor's room, and twelve, and what was the overtime, it's going to be twelve, I'm just curious.
One second, I have it right here.
Because twelve was a big number due to Sandy, correct?
Oh, it could be.
Yeah, all right, so we're at five sixty-seven, six 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 this year, last year was four forty-nine, one one six.
And twelve?
In two thousand and twelve, yes, sir.
Right, what was the budget, what was the budget?
Four twenty-five as well.
I'm sorry, the two thousand and twelve number again, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's right, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars.
Forty-nine versus four twenty-five, but in two thousand and twelve, we were not doing two officers at court security.
Right, so it just started in twenty twelve, and in twenty thirteen was pretty much the full year, and also, we had, we had more bodies, including just even simple things like that extra dispatcher, and we had a few more officers, so that impacted us.
So I guess the one question that I have is, when we decide to use overtime in excess of the budget, right, what if we were just short that body? Because one thing that I spent some time thinking about, when you shared with us members the other night, and almost like a rerun of a good episode, you know, that I've seen over and over again the last several years, is, you know, we talk about robbery is down to twenty-four percent, motor vehicle theft down thirty percent, assaults and burglaries down seven percent, year over year, it's, it seems, I don't know, that we have a total breakout, maybe you can provide us with that, say for the last three or four years, across all those categories, the, those crime numbers, but I can recall several times, you coming before us, and being proudly, and very rightfully so, thankfully, talking about reduction in crime rates, year over year over year.
Right.
We're also seeing, year over year over year, from, you know, eight years ago, when I was first on council, I think we had a hundred and one officers at the time, to now, where we're operating with eighty-nine, see year over year reduction in staff, while we're seeing reduction, it seems as though significant reduction in crime rate across the board, and so I guess my question is, if we're, if we aim for ninety-two, or we aim for ninety-six, what is that ninety-six based on, if we're already seem to be performing better and better each year, with less and less? Is that an area where we may be able to justify not becoming a full-service town, but understanding that the world in Teaneck and the world around us is changing, and we're doing better with less, and it's great, and maybe we can afford to do better with less, by program, not by circumstance?
Well, I, we're certainly not doing it by circumstance, we're doing it by program, and.
No, no, what I'm saying is, when you lose guys, if a guy goes out, you didn't plan for someone to go out on medical leave, and it turns out, we're doing, whatever it is you're doing, you're doing great, because we're still seeing numbers go down every year.
I think, I think what it is too, is that, and you know, I think Councilwoman Parker said earlier, you know, what is it that we want, what are we willing to accept, you know, we just recently, our burglary squad just recently was involved in a county-wide thing, and we got one of our great superstars at burglary, who's been doing burglary since I went to grammar school with him, and in the reality.
He's not very good at it, by the way.
Well, actually, he must be pretty good, because he made a career as long as mine out of it, so, but my point is, is that we did that because we had a burglary squad, and the burglary squad is a great bunch of guys that really care about what they do. If we didn't have a burglary squad, I don't know, maybe someone else might have got them, we certainly wouldn't have got them.
My question is, is that eighty, at eighty-nine officers, we have a burglary squad, and we got them?
Well, actually, at ninety-three or ninety-four, we had a burglary squad, if we go to eighty-nine static, we're not having a burglary squad, and we're not going to have a community policing bureau, and we're not going to have a traffic bureau, so when the manager calls me and needs, because that's what's going to happen, I think.
So four bodies, and automatically, every bureau disappears?
Well, not every bureau, but we're going to have to start picking, I'm going to have to pick, I'm going to have to say, you know, when the manager calls up and wants our traffic bureau to do a traffic count, well, you know, we can do it, but it's going to take two weeks as opposed to a week, you know, I mean, so we're going to pick, it's not going to be a vindictive thing, it's going to be a calculated thing, it's going to be a matter of picking through who we think we can use, you know, to do without, I guess, and you know, we've tried that, and sometimes it works, you know, we went from three people in our identification bureau, we went to two, you know, we increased our number of complaints about people who want to get their gun permits, but we just deal with that, you know, and the reality is, we've done successfully with two, and they've done a great job with that, but they work, you know, hard, and it's great, it's a good efficiency, but the reality is, people come in and complain, and we just deal with that, and you guys get the complaints, because I know I get them from people through the manager.
Now, I think there's complaints that residents give to us, that we share back with the manager, that we'll share back with you, I don't know if you've gotten any of those complaints shared back to you, so maybe that's an area that seems to be the right scaling down.
Yeah, no, I think, and that's an example of someplace where it worked, I mean, I think community policing too, you know, I mean, we lost down on some programs, we're actually down to just two people in community policing, from six and a lieutenant, we're down to two police officers now, and you know, we're going to do it, we're going to do the best again, they're hard-working individuals, and we'll do the best we can, that's an example of just picking.
By the way, they did a wonderful job presentation at the December Youth Advisory Board meeting.
I appreciate that, thank you, and again, that's, that's the thing, no way, it's those type of things, when, when someone needs something like that, when someone calls the manager appropriately, and complains about the drop-off at Hawthorne School, which they've done during the day, we went down to our traffic bureau, did traffic counseling, did some counseling work with the school, and collaboratively resolved the problem, then they hit, then they complained about it in the afternoon, and they're just doing that most recently, when everybody wants a handicap parking space in front of the house, well, the guys on the road can't do that, we have to have specialized people, because they have the time to do that, and I think that becomes the issue, I think, I think we're pretty much ninety-six is the least number to be at, and I understand that it moves, it vacillates up and down, but ninety-six, I believe, is the number that allows, to serve us best.
Going back to the overtime number, do you have, you, I always like, I guess, code the overtime and what it represents for the court, can we get that number?
Now, the courts we're doing, is it mandated that we're doing, was mandated by the county?
We were actually supposed to be doing it after years.
By the state.
We were supposed to be doing it after years, I catch you the manager was a police officer here when we were supposed to be doing it, so I blame that on him, but we, you know, we held off a real long time, we just maintained safe courts, you know, the best we could, we have armed officers here, but we just never screened them with metal detectors and such, you know, we do have overtime broken out, you know, in generalized areas, you know, I mean, I can go over real briefly with you, you know, but, you know, the largest area of overtime for twenty thirteen was for what we call squad shorts, and that's where people not showing up through illness, sickness, reassignment, training, et cetera, that was fifty-four percent of our budget, overtime budget.
And staffing, so?
That's staffing, yes, ma'am. The next largest area is seventeen percent, and that was for, essentially, for the court security personnel, and then after that is ten percent for reports, and that's something that, you know, we try to keep that down as much, that's for officers having to take reports at the end of their shift, we try not to do that too much, we've had that at very low at times, and it expands and contracts, for departments, if an officer's going to go off for three days, you need to get a report done, because when you come in to get your insurance report, you need it done, after that, five percent is for training, a very small amount, two percent is just for general emergencies, and one percent is for traffic posts, such as school posts when our school, of course, and guys don't show up.
How do you handle construction, when cops are out there on construction, how does that work?
Public service, United Water, whomever it is, they pay for that.
They pay for the cops.
They do, the utilities companies, whatever construction company, utilities company, They do. The utilities companies, whatever construction company, utilities company, and that's a big six figure.
They pay for the cruiser as well?
They pay for the vehicles, twenty dollars an hour for the vehicle.
Where is that money seen? Where is that money?
That's not here.
Yeah.
It's not in here. But are expensive, and that is?
No, it's not.
No, because they pay us twenty dollars an hour to cover the gas, to wear and tear on the vehicle, the rental of the vehicle, etc. That money goes back into the general account.
They pay us, we pay them.
No, no. PSCNG pays us for the car-
Yes.
And pays us for the officer.
And then we return.
Then we pay the officer a portion of that-
Correct, then we submit all the money.
But that's not reflected in this number.
Right, but if you're not paying for it, then you- Well, we are, right, but I just want to try and understand, if he's asking for five new cars and utility construction is up and there's seven cars on the road every single day using gas tolls, we're buying the car, he's asking for more cars, but we see the vehicles in our eyes outside, but- But that vehicle that you see at that PSCNG- I haven't said that. -site is a cruiser that's not fit for patrol, that's already been depreciated, written off, and is literally just parked there for eight hours or ten hours or whatever. It's not driving around, it's not being beaten up.
And that's why generally, we use our oldest vehicles.
In general, it's plenty of charge that utility construction sites spend this.
That does occur, yeah. Again, it depends, because we have periods where we'll have six or eight cars out. So you can just imagine if you have five cars, that would make a hundred thousand dollars.
You've got fifty-three cars, but eight of them are generating revenue somewhere.
Correct, yes, they're actually bringing money back.
And the revenue's not here, but it's fine, it's something that can now... I still get an answer, and I'm sorry, we're focusing on this overtime, but, you know, if it's for shift work, is our payroll, that breakage number you said, is there a surplus at any of those accounts because of body count was lowered? Yes or no, Christine, is there a surplus at any of the police?
How many retirements did we have in two thousand and thirteen?
Yes, we didn't go over the salary line item number in the total salary for police.
Right, what's the breakage number on that?
The unexpected balance of police salary wages, which includes overtime, positions, all costs, overtime, overtime, four hundred and fifty-two thousand.
That's the breakage?
No. No, that's unexpendable.
Unexpendable.
Right, so he's over at overtime, right. That we didn't spend, four fifty-two. Correct. When we look at overtime, we budgeted four twenty-five, spent five sixty-seven, so that hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is tremendously, three times.
Conversation, remind?
Thank you, have a good night. Now, is the overtime, I mean, overtime is seen, it's been higher than that. That's four fifty-two number, and I think, you know, we see a lot of historical, you know, two thousand and twelve, thirteen budgeting actual in our book. But I don't think we've ever seen a breakout, like historically, how typical is that number? Is four fifty-two atypical and it's normally twenty thousand dollars, or is it normally a million? Right. Which, you know- Right, but if we look at, you know, what was, what we, last year's budget, what was- Right. But what was two thousand and twelve, what was two thousand and eleven, as far as, you know, is this four fifty-two number, is that atypical, is it typical?
I would say two thousand and twelve, but also I think there's still, this is two thousand and twelve, I don't think it's not settled without coverage.
Yeah, twelve is still-
No, it's thirteen.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Yeah, I think it's thirteen and fourteen. I think both of them are the same, thirteen or fourteen.
We've got a bunch of them.
So Chris-
I probably don't retain any numbers in my head, but, um, police two thousand and twelve was sixty-six thousand.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's not typical. But there was something else I didn't find. Oh, that, you know, this state document gives you what was spent in the appropriation duties, and that's the same numbers that you're going to get in the other section.
But we just don't have them yet to work with, and that's the problem is-
Right, yes, I, and what I'd like to do is, is put this here, call this, and say, I've got this separate tab in this book that will put in front of this tab, rather than, I would only like to supplement this book number of those pages.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on overtime? Nope, okay. So now let's look at the park rangers. If we can talk about the plan for them, how it came about, how we plan to use them.
Okay, I'll discuss that. Park rangers, I think that that's a term that we just decided to use.
It's not a civil service title?
There is, but it's a state title. I believe park ranger is a state title. I don't believe there's a local title for park ranger. We decided to call it park ranger. But I believe that our goal was to not have the, have it in the park ranger sense where this person's going around to all the parks. Our main concern is that we're making an investment in Votie Park and stalling the field, and we were concerned about the policing of that field, that someone's there to monitor the field, to make sure it's being used properly, make sure it's not abused, make sure people are not going on there with gum and other items, because that could destroy the field. So our main purpose was, let's have someone there to monitor the field. That expanded into the term park ranger, it expanded into, we could possibly use that person to help here in court security as well, when they're not doing the park. So that's really the origin of it. But what we envision is part-time people that would be able to, that would be under the direction of the police department. They'd be able to monitor the field, they would be able to assist here with court security, to help reduce our costs in that respect. And I think we wanted to make them special ones. Whatever special doesn't carry a firearm, we recommended making them a special that does not carry a firearm. I believe that that's special one. So what we, we came up with a salary range and we figured, whatever money we have allotted, that's the-
Number of hours we're going to buy?
That's the number of hours we'll buy, and whatever that gets us, that's what it gets us. But we thought that it would be better if they be under the command and control of the police department. We thought it might be easier to accomplish a dual purpose.
Do you have a per hour rate?
I believe the, depending on whether or not they were special ones or twos, twos carry firearms, I believe the number was between fifteen dollars an hour and twenty-five dollars an hour.
Right, so if we look at something like twenty-dollar-an-hour staff that can replace more than fifty-dollar-an-hour staff in terms of court security, could it be both? Do they have to be armed at court security? Can it be a special one?
You have to have a certain, you're going to have to have one armed person inside the courtroom, because this is a secured area. You're going to have to have one armed person at the metal detector.
Currently, our operation is one in and two out, correct?
We can make it one in and one out.
One in, one out, and a special?
We could, that's what-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that it could be one in, one out, with a special as opposed to two on the outside.
Correct, yes.
Armed officers, yes.
I think we should be discussing these separately. We're talking about park rangers, which I am not in support of, and we're also talking about park rangers helping out with security.
Well, I think park ranger is maybe a misnomer, and we're talking about the use of special police officer, special officer ones.
For the park as well?
For the park as well, for, yeah, for Teneck. It's that they could be used in both locations, but since we haven't used them before, like this was the conversation, we originally first started talking about them with court security, but as the Votie Field Project came out, I think we started talking about these when we got a presentation on H cops like three years ago.
How does the county police monitor their parks? Do they have rangers?
They have, yeah, they have a special security, they have security officers.
They have security officers that-
I've listened, I've listened to the discussion about park rangers, and there's no justification to have them at all in Teneck. I think we're reaching out to spend money, for what?
No, that very well may be the case. My concern, when we first started talking about the use of the special officers, was as it related to court security, is being able to reduce that overtime and that expense. So I think in the context of that, that's something that I'm very interested in looking at. When we look at the park, we have, can you walk us through park directed, you know, what are the directed patrols now? As far as going through the parks, times of day, is it based on season, activities, sports going on?
Certainly it's based on-
How do we release our parks today?
Basically, it's part of the random patrol. I mean, it's an activity that all the officers partake in, but it's also driven by things such as activity in the parks and our activity, our workload. So if our workload's higher, an officer may conceivably never go through the park. Very conceivably, it depends, you know, it depends on the park and the section of town. But these section of town, the officers know the parks within this section and they try to leave.
Hockey park probably doesn't get so much attention.
Right, they're not going to the toka loka and checking it out.
Not walking the trails.
Probably don't even know where that is, but, uh, but that's the reality. So it's random, but, you know, we try to do it as much as possible, at least once or twice a tour. And, you know, larger parks such as Votie gets more exposure. But it also could not sit down there during a sports activity, obviously. And that's one, I think that was one of the concerns that was brought up, you know, during sports activity, who's going to monitor the fields?
See, my concern is not so much, when it comes to Votie and the new fields, my concern is not during sports activity, because during sports activity, there's parents, there's coaches, there's league staff or league, you know, volunteers. My concern is the safety and security of the fields when nobody else is there.
But you can't monitor the fields twenty-four hours.
No, you can't, and so we may decide that we're not going to monitor this at all.
No, I think that we, this park ranger idea, in listening to the discussion, there was one point where we were going to have them help the traffic people give tickets. There was another time we talked about having them come in here and do some of the monitoring work. We don't need to spend money that way, I don't think.
I don't either, unless we see that there's a need, I don't see why we're even discussing this at this point. If we're discussing hiring H twos, or whatever they're called, to reduce costs for court security, that's the context in which I will support those offices, not to secure a park.
If we were to confine the use of specials simply to replace one of the uniformed officers outside court security, that number of four, the seventy-thousand-dollar number, would go to what? Because I think that's what, I think that's what council is interested in. And so if we can look at what that number would be, you know, how many hours do we operate?
We're spending about fifteen hours a week in overtime. That's an average for, to staff that, so you have three people-
Fifteen per person.
No, per week, total, per week, overtime per week to staff that, staff to court security.
Court security is only staffed for five hours?
No, it's because, again, as we talked about earlier, we try to pick, so sometimes we reassign detectives that were actually on regular straight time and they're working in uniform to do it. Other times, we're just so short on staff that we have to put someone there in overtime, so that's when it becomes a little bit more challenging.
Okay.
But we should see, the number that's increased for this position should be decreased for someplace else.
Well, there's definitely going to be a nexus there.
So I think from a policy perspective, I think it's clear, obviously, we need a fuller complement of council, but I don't suspect it would be too much different if we look at moving away from the discussion for the time being about park rangers for the park, but looking at using special ones to be able to be a tool to reduce overtime and court security. Is that- I'm okay with that on a temporary basis. We open up the park, we reevaluate it in a year.
Exactly.
If we see we have a problem, if we see we have issues, then we need to address it. But as of right now, we know we have an overtime issue with court security, and if we can, we can address that first and save money as opposed to finding a new way to- Out of curiosity, could specials do utility work? I'm just, chief, can the specials do utility work?
Yes, they could.
We're not paying for it, but we are paying for it. We can charge the utility?
Boy, the town's not allowed to make money on the deal. I can tell you that. You can't charge a one thing and make a little big off the top, you can't do that. So you can't, the town can't make money. The town's only allowed to charge the fees that the officer costs in salary and those reasonable fees that are related to that, such as administrative fees, which we also charge the administrative fee, and also the vehicle fees. So we can't, you know, charge fifty and pay the guy twenty and keep thirty for ourselves.
That's a business, that's a lot. All right, I hope you don't, you know, I hope no one minds us asking that.
No.
No, it's something the utilities-
Some towns have tried to do that, but you can't do that.
Okay.
And what would be the appropriate term of this position, not park rangers?
Special officer one.
Special, is that what it is?
Yes, correct.
Is that a civil service title, or is that-
No, that's not a civil service title.
But it would have to be created by-
It'll be created by wardens, yes.
And so we can save some money on overtime there and not negatively impact court security or the operation of the maggot.
Yeah, and I think if we go that way, we could decide whatever that number's going to be. Based on-
So if we can work on revising that?
Yeah, based on our total amount of cuts or some number that we're trying to get to, you know, we can look at that.
Okay, excellent. So that addresses overtime, we talked about staffing level, we talked about cars, we talked about the operating budget, talked about park rangers. Any other questions on police budget?
Personal.
In terms of- Um, what's the, looking at retirement, obviously, retirement is where we cut our salary, steps up, steps down. We've got no one on the list, we can't hire for seven months. Chief, what do you expect of retirements? This, obviously, is a completely, there's no factual, or there's only one factual, but, you know.
Yeah, right, other than the one factual, the rest is just hypothetical. Yeah, really, exactly, if someone gets a job, decides to leave.
And the whisper number?
There is no whisper number. Actually, no one's talking about leaving right now.
So they're the answer?
I can tell you that I know of.
Well, and we have no one to hire, we have no one to hire.
I didn't know some of the guys were going to leave last year either, though, so.
What was last year's total retirement count? So who's the guy that actually knows, let's ask him.
He'd have to, he's getting ready to retire. But there was two, Marion and Sullivan left, and neither one of those were expected. Especially Sullivan wasn't expected, because he didn't have twenty-five years with us. So it was just, he really threw, you know, it's one of these that doesn't even go into our calculations.
Do you know of an account of how many people are hitting twenty-five years this year? Okay, we've had, we'll achieve a full twenty-five.
Right, that could leave.
Correct. Is there any sort of average, hey, half the guys are right on the dime?
It used to be really close to twenty-five, people are staying, because they love it, so.
Job satisfaction is, job satisfaction's up?
The world's changing and people are staying, it's a different thing.
Twelve thirty, it pays a little bit.
You know, closer to thirty, they definitely get ready to go.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You and your staff?
I appreciate it, thank you.
So with the cars, are we saying that we're fine with the recommended purchase number?
I'm fine in acknowledging that the chief has requested six.
Yeah, should we put that up?
That'd be something to discuss.
Can we, in passing please, to get a report of the cars with the higher mileage?
Um, chief, one more, can we get a rundown of the, is it possible, like, you know, year, make, model, mileage of the fifty-two vehicles that we do have of our inventory?
Right now, no, no, we definitely, we have statistical that is done every month, we can give you a-
If we can get a report, they can-
Tomorrow morning.
Understand, like, an age and use inventory?
No, no, we have a detailed inventory with each vehicle, the age, number of miles, etc.
Excellent.
Also, the replacement of the cars is part of our replacement schedule. We had this discussion before, we try to replace six cars a year. So the average age on these patrol cars would be about five years, four or five years, they may be used in patrol and stuff, so.
I understand that that is, that is the goal of the police department. It's one that we've discussed in depth every year for the last eight years and one that we'll continue to discuss.
Just letting you know.
But one year we didn't fund, I said one year we did not fund.
That's correct.
So there've been years where we didn't buy any, there've been years where we bought three, years where we bought six. You know, ultimately, I understand the chief's request, and I know the chief understands the decisions we've made in the past.
Thank you, great evening.
Thank you, thank you, chief.
So this-
Sub-tenant?
No.
Director?
I think on this one, we should start in tab four.
Okay.
If we start in tab four, we can do the salary and wages and then move forward. Last year, in this budget, there was a certain number of positions that we had froze, that we didn't hire. We're still asking to replace those positions with four public works laborers. We tried to, we tried to make this a little bit simpler, rather than saying, you know, two in maintenance, two here, we're going to be moving this to, you know, just laborers from the public works department as opposed to designating where they're at in the department.
Correct.
Because that could move around during the year, so it's just easier if we say four laborers for public works, so.
Far be it from us to micromanage if somebody's operating, you know, fixing a broom truck or park maintenance or whatever, that's certainly flexibility that you should- or park maintenance or whatever, that's certainly flexibility that you should have.
So Director Wilson, if you, if you could just tell us, you know, about your existing staffing, how many, how many people you currently have?
Currently, we have 57, and we share a clerk typist with engineering, so it's a total of 58. Our authorized strength is 68.
When's the last time we operated at 68, if ever?
We started, we were authorized prior to Mr. Brown coming, when previous manager was here, our authorized strength back then was 71, and then we had to hire and freeze back then, and then it dropped drastically, and then.
Eliminated nine positions.
Until just about maybe three, four, or five years ago, when we instituted the recycling program, and we hired three truck drivers.
Mm-hmm.
So we dropped all the way down from 71.
So probably in 2000, not in 2013, I would think in 2012, I believe that we did have 68 people in 2012.
As far as authorized, yes.
Yeah, that we physically had, actual bodies.
We eliminated nine in 2010, I think.
Excuse me?
Was it, or, yeah, there were nine.
Authorized.
You swore you eliminated those. There was a slew of retirements that weren't replaced, we didn't eliminate positions, we didn't, we shrunk the authorized strength.
We shrunk, yeah.
To reflect that, that current staffing level.
Yeah, nine positions were not funded.
Okay.
And just to reflect, Councilman Schwartz, I appreciate the, the wonderful comments of our snowplow operation, but I just want to make it clear that, you know, although we use the term full service here in T-Nite, public works, we are not full service, because we are not capable of doing the things we did before, because we don't have the manpower. And, you know, we talked about that last year, the things that suffer during the course of the year, where we have to pick, pick and choose on what we do and what we don't do, and that still exists, you know, to today. Those phone calls that we get from, or emails that you get, or to the manager, or forwards them to me, whether it's about lots, or islands, or, or some, maybe sometimes park conditions, or, you know, whatever it may be, that we don't do is that we, you know, necessarily, or I feel is a, a priority, those kind of things get pushed off on, you know, on the sideburn until we get the phone call or the email to take care of it, and we go do it. But, and that's been existing for the last, you know, few years, as you well know.
By the way, did you get, were you reached out to by the head of public works in Bergenfield? I was at a meeting not too long ago with a couple of Bergenfield council members, who were commenting on the quality of our snow removal, snow plowing process, and wanted to recommend that there be a mentoring or tutoring program, so to speak. And I think, I think ultimately, you know, the conversation led to, it comes down to, we spend money on it. Can I ask, there's some, there's some issues that, you know.
I understand.
You spend more money on salt and brine and people and contractors? You do, you do a good job, and it's clear, we do a great job.
Before you answer, I think the question, your statement, my question on your statement is, why on earth is it, when you go on Windsor Road in a snowstorm, and you hit Bergenfield, is it just a disaster? What are you doing better, or what aren't they doing? We just get an idea of what's.
Well, they don't, they don't use brine, and we spread more salt.
I don't know if they don't use it, I'm not sure if they do or not, but the, the key to, to fighting the snowstorm, and we instituted this, and this is why you'll see on our overtime, is that the, the manager, you know, was, was the focus point behind this, is that in the past, previous administration and, and my predecessor, because he was told this, is that, you know, when the snow starts coming down, we depended on the police department to say, hey, it's time to come in and start sloughing, where we now, what we do is, we're here, and we're waiting for the snow, like, you know, Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts commercial, we're here, where we're trying to catch that first flake. So we're in, we're in place, ready to go. You know, we're not, we're not having our guys travel, you know, an hour and a half, two hours to get here, and then by then, the roads are covered, and by that point, you know, you could lose the storm by then. So we're here, and we're, you know, we're here at full force, you know, and when I say full force, that's either, what we do is, we split our guys up and do an A and B shift. Now, is A and B shift fully funded all the time, with manpower? No, it's not. You know, we have the same problems that everyone does, whether it's IODs, they're allowed vacations, you get sick time, et cetera, and just, for example, the last snowstorm that we had, your director of public works and our assistant superintendent, I came in on a Thursday morning at 6 o'clock, and I didn't leave from snowplow until about 1:30, 2 o'clock Friday afternoon. So that's the difference, what we do in public works, where it's all hands-on, and unfortunately, it's, it's everybody, including myself. Now, do other towns do that? I don't know. But, you know, that's the difference between us and Bergenfield, because I know Bergenfield doesn't do that, because its manager and governing body doesn't want to spend the money, so. What, what's, what's the?
When the snowstorm comes, you can't, you can't do it all yourself. What's the formula for hiring outside contractors?
We pick the phone up, we have, we have a list of who, we have about five to six different contractors that have, you know, one contractor has one truck, another contractor could have six trucks. We usually get in around 15 to 17 pieces of equipment. And on top, you know, we like, well, we, we divide the town up into 15 sections, and what we like to do is put one of our guys, we're the contractor, in each section, and they go street for street. And our main roads are mostly manned by our staff, where we have up to four individuals on the east side, that's east of the track, and then four guys on the, on the west side, on the west side of the tracks.
And we do a great job.
Thank you.
And I just, I just want to add, I mean, it's, it's really to Fran's credit, you know, that, that, that things are done so professionally. I think that we were surprised, when you, when you talk about getting prepared for a storm, how long it takes to ready all the equipment, to load the trucks up with salt, and for the guys to get ready to be out there plowing for five or six hours, we find that it is extremely important to get them in place well in advance of the storm starting, and be sitting in position, ready, and waiting to go. Because if they don't, it's going to take us two hours to get ready, to get the trucks ready, to get out on the road. So by, by having that advanced time and having them ready, I think that we've been able to clear the roads much better, and, and the clearing of the roads better, it reduces the potential for property damage. So you don't have residents out there banging their cars up, you don't have to worry about the police cars getting damaged, and it's, it's just been a benefit to everybody.
When we look at, when we look at public safety dollars, you know, we look at police, we look at fire, you know, we say we want to protect, you know, from, from injury, loss of life, destruction of property, there's no doubt that the way we invest in our snowstorms is a public safety issue.
Absolutely.
Those are dollars very well spent.
And, and this is also carried over into leaf removal, you know, evaluating how we've done leaves in the past, and, and, and having a willingness to change. In the last storm, in the last leaf pickup, one of the things that we did that helped us pick it up faster, as opposed to hiring another contractor to help us, Fran made a decision to rent another loader, so that all of our people could, who are capable of operating loaders, we didn't, we didn't get them all, but, so that we can put another person, who's a T-Nite guy, who's capable of operating a loader, in a machine. So rather than spending on contractor, we put it on, on a, on a guy with a loader, rented a loader, and we were able to clear things a lot faster, and it was money well, well spent.
Because of our guy familiarity with the streets, like, what, what makes our guy better, as opposed to a contractor with his own loader?
Well, obviously, he knows, knows the town, but the, the, one of the key things with that was that last, this year, or 2013, was the first year we were able to put out eight full-time crews. That was, that was divided, again, it was, Route 4 was the divider line, north and south, and then we had four on each side. Plus, the other thing that we had this year, we had both our roll-off trucks and our tandem out at all times, which was the first year that we did that, and so they were out picking up loads too. So we were, and again, all staff, except for maybe one or two parks guys, were devoted to doing leaf removal. So, again, everything else suffered, as a matter of fact, we're still doing leaves in parks as we speak.
Leaves in parks, but not on streets?
Right.
No, no, and when the leaves are off the streets easier, or quicker, the snow gets picked up. Snow gets plowed better, streets are safer.
Knock wood, too, this is our first leaf season, normal one in.
Two years.
Three, two or three years, so.
And the leaves fall off the trees when they're supposed to.
And, and, and the guys did such a great job this year, because we finished that at all times, and we actually saved, I think, about a week and a half worth of money on contractors that we cut off.
I think we saw a record amount of compliments on the leaf pickup this year, and.
Excellent.
I have a question, Sharon Sable's question, and it's, and I don't know the full story, so I'm actually asking the question, maybe you can help me with this. Lincoln, I'm going to use Lowell School for an example, that driveway's plowed within minutes, you got, they got, Board of Ed's got that crew down there on a Friday evening, you can just eat off the ground at midnight on a Friday, when there's no school till the following Monday. In your opinion, is there anything that could be done to reach out to the Board of Ed? They've got a ton of equipment, and a ton of apparent manpower and contractors that they use, to get those schools cleaned up a lot quicker than, in my opinion, than needs to get done, and I'm not an expert on non-school days? Do you drive by VF and see those trucks and, and, is there a shared service opportunity as it relates to the snowplow with the Board of Ed? That's the question.
I don't, I don't know how they do their snow operation, I know they come down, and we have a shared service, they, they use our salt, they use our calcium, when time's permitted, we'll, we'll help them out, and maybe pry in a parking lot or whatever, if, if time permits. But as far as their operation is, there's a little different at ours, because they, they work there around, obviously, they're, you know, the kids going to school, so, I mean, sometimes they'll, they'll, they'll come in at different hours of the night to do it, you know, and I don't know what their manpower is, to be honest with you, so I don't, I don't know.
Are you authorized to use their trucks?
No, we don't use their trucks.
Are you allowed to?
I don't know if, I don't know what their, I mean.
Is there a deep, is there a Board of Ed DPW supervisor?
Yeah. Board of Ed supervisor, yeah.
No, the, Public Works for the Board of Ed, they've got a lot of vehicles, is there a, is there your counterpart at the Board of Ed?
Yes.
Have you sat, been able to sit down to me and?
I haven't discussed it with them, that's an opportunity.
So let's work that down as an opportunity, because there's a lot of vehicles, and, and they're needed, when they're needed, you got to plow those, there's no doubt, you got to plow, but when you don't need to plow, let's get those plowed, let's, you know, let's not, like you said, what you do with the leaves, is you barge your truck, you put your guys to work, and obviously, you've always said, you can't just give a guy a vehicle, or, or an equipment, but in times that we need it, we're reaching a lot of outside contractors, when we can be reaching our own opposite side of the aisle to our counterparts at the Board of Ed. If anything, the, our superintendent should know those answers, should be able to get those information pulled, and, you know, jump in there. I have a feeling, probably.
And, but, you know, we look at it and say, gee, plows on like F-150s, maybe fine for parking lots, but maybe not for volume of snow at larger.
But we've got parking lots as well.
Things like that.
We've got our community parking lots as well.
Yeah, I would encourage that dialogue to take place, and see if there's an opportunity.
There's, there's an opportunity for discussion, I think that.
A hundred percent, that's always the first step.
Mr. Rose, you, you heard that, right?
I heard it.
Oh, okay, all right.
Excellent. So we look at, if we're in tab four, if we can go to page four of four, we look at overtime. Do we have a full year number on overtime, Fran? I have 330,000 in my budget book for DPW, for public works overtime, account 300.
332.
332. And then while she's looking that up, I'm going to recommend, because of the time, if we can, we'll finish with public works tonight, and then call it a night, and we'll carry capital in various, my assumption, like we did last year, where we added an additional budget meeting, so we'll kind of work through as we can hold people's attention level, and if we need to add another budget meeting in February, we'll add another to pick up areas where we.
I think that's great, just to head, so I, I'm not here, I'm out of the country next week, as I am the third week of every January, so I may miss some both meetings next week, but I love that idea.
And then also, I think I mentioned to some of you, I'll be missing the meeting on the 28th, I'll be having surgery, I should be back for our council meeting on Tuesday, according to my doctor.
We don't have a meeting on the 20th.
No, but we have a budget meeting on the 30th.
You mean the second?
I'll be being released from the hospital just as this meeting is being.
So come here, hopefully.
Actually, I may not be here on the 20th, I'm 30th either.
So the 30th, I won't be here, but I should be at our, our council meeting, and our first council meeting in February.
So you're thinking about the 6th, having a, there was a board, my schedule, there was a board adjustment meeting here, but.
All right, we can, we can certainly find a place to, like, either the week after or something.
Fine, fine, I'm in Florida.
Yeah, we'll decide that as well. I do have that overtime number.
You do?
That's 377, 815, .85.
Okay.
And that is because of extra December snow? What's, what's the, what's the biggest contributor to that? Well, I think we have, what do you have, four, four snow events in December?
Yeah, towards the end, yes.
Yeah.
So it's snow, it's a combination of everything, snow, leaf removal, we also have, you know, projects like the community gardens, a lot of that was done on overtime, due to the fact that, you know, we took staff doing it a day, that, that maintenance department would never get anything done, standby, sewer calls, stuff like that.
Mm-hmm. But we don't typically have four snowplow events in December, that's, that's a typical, right?
Yeah, it's, who knows?
You usually don't have it for Halloween.
A couple of years ago, we had them, well, we had them every.
We had them in October, you know, we don't, we don't normally, we don't normally plant on October either.
Making a comment about DPW, you have a tremendous public relations opportunity at the recycling center, I go there a lot, and the guys that work there are very helpful, and people come away smiling, I mean, that's, they may not like to pay the extra taxes, but they get good service.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, any questions on the, on the overtime number? Okay, so we can go to.
While, while they're looking, can I ask you a question? You, you, you started off with this, you're down tremendously, you're down tremendously, you're not doing a lot of stuff, you're asking for four people, that's your, that's your dream, that's your wish, that makes you come in here smiling? Is that going to get you to smile, is that, is that?
Well, it's a little late.
Right, but I'm saying, is that?
Yeah, that would, that would help, that would ease the pain in a lot of ways, where, you know, one of our goals this year, which we did not accomplish, and I told the manager today, was we were hoping to get all our signs completed all the way up to the Bergenfield border east of T-Nite Road, and we didn't meet that, we really didn't come that close, but, but my sign department is one guy.
Right, but from my point of view, it's great, but that's not, for me, that could take five more years, from, from my point of view, it's a citizen pain, that could take five more years. What, 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 any goals that were missed that I felt, as a resident, that I felt? I didn't feel a green or a blue sign, did I feel something that you, that I feel, what pain did I feel because you didn't have these manpower?
Probably, probably one of the things would be upkeep of the parks, you know, one of the things that we don't do on, because of black manpower, is, you know, making sure the playground areas are maintained with the safety surface, is one thing, just in general upkeep, because it makes, you know, one of the other things is, our, our maintenance department is a crew of five guys, or six, I'm sorry, and, and for all the villains crew of five guys, or six, I'm sorry, and for all the buildings that they take care of, it's a lot of work. And, you know, unfortunately, there's no plans, you know, as far as doing maintenance work is always abandoned. You know, we respond to calls, we don't come in and say, hey, we're going to paint this place in, you know, in April of 2014, because we can't do that because we don't have the staff.
Less push on that. What about volunteers? Park cleanup people, I forgot what they're called in New York City, I forgot, the Friends of the OT, Friends of OT Park. Any thoughts on that?
No fun.
Right. Ready, willing, able.
I mean, if people were willing to go to OT parks and clean it up, that's fine by me.
Now, when we say clean it up, what are we talking about? We talking about...
Pick up brown litter?
Yeah, we talking about litter, are we talking about, obviously, we talk about cleanup, we're also talking about leaf pickup, we're talking about, you know, garden debris branches, things like that.
I'm afraid there's Sunday cleanups or Saturday cleanups that are, all going to staff that short because we're trying to be physically conservative.
But we're talking about litter, I mean, what are you...
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about pahol repairs, but, you know, litter, pickup, branch pickup, stuff that he can't get to because we're backed up. And there's hours of people, volunteer hours.
I think that's something that we'll bring up at the next Parks Playground and Recreation Advisory Board meeting.
If you could.
Let's see if we can do some type of targeted, you know, adopt a park program, a targeted hit this season, we're going to request volunteers to join us and help with park cleanup or park duty occasion.
So if we're moving on, in the budget, the one line item that's increased in their operating budget is the disposal cost. And you'll have about $45,000 of that, 59, 525 increase is a contract for leaf disposal. And the others are just other minor amounts that increased in the different disposal lines. You can see it on page 94, 230, 94 account, page 94, account 230.
10.7.
When we, you know, we talk about leaf disposal, right? The people we pay to take our leaves, Fran, what are they doing with them? Right, they're mulching them on site, they're like creating, they're producing topsoil, right?
Yes.
What type of operation, or, you know, how large of a piece of land do you need? Is it in any way conceivable that that's something that we could do ourselves?
No. You and you some about half the size of OT to do something with the amount of leaves that we collect.
Okay.
I think it's like five times the amount or something like that. There's our, there are restrictions, and then there's all kind of permits that you've got to get for noise and stuff like that, so it's, for the amount of leaves that we collect, and it varies anywhere roughly around 30,000 cubic yards, there's a lot of leaves. I would probably, I would say that we can probably fill up the new football or soccer field with no problem, maybe 10 feet high all the way around, easy.
Oh, I've got to move that.
So we want, so it's, you know, we're, one of the things, we're very proud of our leaf operation, because there's not an all-town around that does as much as we do. And I hear that from the guy that picks up our leaves, because it's, you know, they can't even keep up with us. I mean, they can bring in truckload after truckload of, you know, 18-wheelers, but as much as they take out, we bring right back in, so it's...
But it's not feasible at all for us to do that type of operation ourselves.
No.
And that's something we've looked at, I mean, this is something we talk about, I talk about this with him. And many years ago, the town used to do it themselves. We used to have an area on Argon Park where they used to, you know, put the leaves and have them decomposed there, and there was an area on Windsor Road.
Do my Windsor Road.
Yeah, Windsor Road as well.
Do them at DPW yard in Lower Grass, huh?
Yeah, DP, yeah, we were shut down, so we can't do it. Also, there's an odor that comes from it, and you have to tend to it. I mean, every couple of days, you've got to go in there with a loader, you've got to turn the piles over, so it is, you know, somewhat, you know, requires attention to it as well.
This is money well spent.
Well, there's a way of cutting this, you could cut this, you know, out. If everyone didn't rake their leaves into the street and everybody picked them and bagged them, you know, that could...
Well, if people picked them up and bagged them, we'd still have to get rid of the bags of leaves, right? We'd still have...
I'm not suggesting that we do that.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, but where the people raked them into the street or people put them in bags, we'd still be picking them up.
People could mulch them, you could mulch them.
Art, that's what needs to mention that.
Right, you could have a mulching mower, mulch them on your property, so that they don't have to be taken off your property.
No.
So, it's, I mean, Teaneck, I mean, Teaneck has an exceptional amount of trees, so I think that, in that respect, would differ than a lot of other towns. And this is something that, you know, that we need to do. I mean, I don't, you know, we have a large senior population, I don't see that everybody, I'm saying that it could happen, but it's impractical, it's not, it's not practical that that's going to happen. We're going to continue to need to do it. Budget line to make up for the plastic bottles that we have to pay to put away, in other words, we used to make money on those things, but now we can't. Do we have another amount of money we have to come up with?
How much revenue are we going to lose in the recycling trust fund for not being able to sell recyclable trees through seven? I think that's...
Yeah.
Any idea?
I'll let you know after January. I don't anticipate it being that much in the beginning at all. But, you know, I think we average approximately about 17,000 a month in revenue.
Okay.
So I don't see it dropping that much.
One in two are the predominant source of recycled plastics.
Right, and I don't think that every citizen in Teaneck is going to abide by the rules anyway, until they get an understanding of how we recycle, because it's new, and I don't...
And not in spite, not that people just...
Exactly, not everyone's going to go, that's a two, or that's a, you know, three, or whatever, and, you know, like everyone, and it's going to take a little time to, for everyone to be accustomed to what we recycle and what we don't recycle.
Some people don't even recycle.
That's true.
Even though it's required.
Okay. So that addresses the one out of whack increase?
What, the 50, I guess?
Yeah. On the disposal fees. Any other specific questions on operating?
I have the same question that I've had for the other budgets, with the spent number and the adopted number, it's like half, 300. We budgeted 1.7 million spent on page 91.
This was right at the end of November, I assume.
You're still on the 300?
Yeah. Yeah, just count 300 overall, or even any of the subaccounts, I mean...
Right, so disposal cost, which is the big one that's missing areas for the leaves, and that hasn't been calculated yet, that's going to be a big number.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things that are stacked, you're in here.
Okay.
Yeah, and then this, obviously, the, you know, snowplowing. Right. Right, the contract services for the leaf, the contractors that we use, the two garbage trucks for front-end loaders, that's not in there neither.
Yeah, it's 500,000, okay. What is that?
We still don't have that.
Didn't we hand it out? We can't...
Oh, no, we piled it, we stacked and piled it in front of the manager. Okay, so if we look at... I'm confused, because I see, are these different account numbers?
Yeah, go to page 10.
Come on, page 10, oh, so 300 is the number in the middle of that.
Right.
So 301, 26 is what? Three is 2,013.
2,013.
So that's number, 300 is our account 300.
Right.
Okay. So...
Is there more?
Yeah, yeah, so now we still, we went up from 832 to 1,001, but you're saying that there's still quite a bit of charges that are outstanding that haven't, bills haven't come in yet?
Contract services.
When do we expect to see a finalization on those numbers? I mean, is it a January thing, is it an April thing? When do we see those numbers all cleared up?
The contract services should be soon, but the leaf removal probably won't be until maybe sometime in February, I would imagine. They're still pulling out of there, so...
Okay, but not as far off as April or anything?
No, I don't think so, no. I hope not, they better get them out there quick, in case it snows.
Because they're still sitting at leaf transfer, if you may.
Yes.
There's a service that hasn't actually been righted yet. It's not that they're slow in writing the bill, they're slow in writing the service.
A little bit of, well, they billed us twice already, so some of it's in there, there might be two more payments that have to be billed yet.
Okay. Anything else, Councilman? No? Okay. You know, I think, obviously, you know, when we come to our final meetings, as we look to cut, or add, or place back, and I think last year, much to my disappointment, there was a wholesale hiring freeze, so to speak, put in place, although positions were budgeted for. I think, I think overall, I'm going to rec, or at least, I'm going to advocate for reducing much of the hiring suggested in the proposed budget, with the exception of the four for DPW. I think that there are processes going on, or that should be going on in some of our parks, and maintenance issues that ultimately cost us in the long run, and I think that this is, this is a staffing investment that we should be making, unlike some of the other ones.
You read my mind, I definitely, I also think that we get our best bang for the buck because of the amount of the starting salaries. Though, I'm not really so sure I'm on to the four-person thing, I would like to try C2, and we come back next year with a half a smile, maybe, if no smile, maybe we'll see four next year, but I'm in the two zone.
Fran, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
For tonight, and for everything else you do, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
If you want to spend five more minutes and make it an even 10 o'clock, I can go through.
I believe there's a motion to adjourn on the...
All right, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Give my second wind, so... Where you going, man? Oh, you going to have a good time? Okay. I understand that's the place to go. We don't go by Robert's rules here.
I'm, I'm...